Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, only to take a roll call for the minute. How does it members confirm their presence when I call their name? Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
Present.
Councillor Anderson?
Good evening, I'm present.
Lord Profess Campbell?
Gives us apologies.
Thank you. Deputy Lord Profess Cordell?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla?
Present.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn?
Yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sawyers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Hi, I am here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor Finnegan?
Present, good evening.
Yeah, Councillor McKeer?
Present.
Councillor McCarvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
Present, let's do this Dundee.
Councillor Skellin?
Evening, I'm present.
Councillor Shears?
Evening, present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey MacPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton?
I'm here.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Bailey Scott? Bailey Scott? Alma is absent meantime. Apologies have been received from Mrs McVeen. Mr Abu Bakr? Alma is absent. Ms Barclay?
Present.
Thank you. Apologies have been received from Mrs Javid. Mr Anderson McGinnis? Also, Ma is absent and that concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you Elaine. So, committee with your indulgence before we move on to substantive agenda tonight, I'd like to raise three items before we do that and appreciate your indulgence allowing me to do this. Firstly, as elected members will be aware, earlier this month, former councillor John Corrigan sadly passed away at the age of ninety-seven. John was a councillor for nearly twenty years on the council and our condolences all go to his family at this sad time. And Bailey Sawyers, I'll bring you in at this time to pay tribute to former councillor Corrigan.
Thank you, convener. As you say, John Corrigan was ninety-seven when he sadly passed away and I wouldn't say ninety-seven years old. I wouldn't say ninety-seven years young. This is a guy who when I first knew him was in his late sixties and he just embarked and had taken a degree at Dundee University. So he was always looking to push the edge and push himself. As Stuart said, John was first elected to Dundee District Council in nineteen eighty-eight and served on the successor Dundee City Council until two thousand and seven. And during that period, he represented Craigie Bank and various bits and pieces around it due to boundary changes and such like. I think the word I would use to describe John, certainly in respect of how he dealt with his constituents on their behalf, was tenacious. There was at one time a proposal by the then Housing Association Scottish Homes to demolish a substantial number of houses in Craigie Bank because of the construction of the houses. Incidentally, I think the houses are probably the same age as John, about ninety-seven years being built. And clearly the Housing Association hadn't reckoned with John and the local tenants association because they took them on, challenged them and forced them to do up the houses rather than knock them down. And I think, living as I do myself in Craigie Bank, that was absolutely the right sound that was made and paid tribute to John and all the work he did as a councillor. He was obviously the group leader of the SNP for a number of years and served as the convener of the Tayside Joint Police Board, both roles he prevailed in and absolutely loved. So as Stuart says, I hope we could all join in sending condolences to Doreen and all his family.
Thank you Bailey Sawyers for that subject. I didn't know John that well. I think the election that he stood down was the election I first got elected, but certainly on the variety of times that I met him, certainly a great character and I'm sure sadly missed by all, especially his family. So with that, I'm going to move on to the second item I wish to raise before we come to substantive agenda. And I think, to be fair, we've all been shocked by the events of last couple of weeks in Gaza and Israel. And it's been requested, and I think it's only appropriate, that as a city council, we have a minute silence for all the innocent victims in both Gaza and Israel and also for all the communities affected locally, both here in Dundee but throughout the country. So I'm going to ask that we have a minute silence for all the innocent victims. Thank you. Okay, thank you all for accommodating that and respectfully doing the minute silence as well. So thank you. And the final issue I wish to raise is obviously in the last few days, the city and the north-east of the country have been impacted significantly by storm Babette. Our council staff along with partners, especially the emergency services, have worked night and day to support our communities throughout this. And I'd like to invite the leader of administration to make a comment.
Thank you very much, convener. I'm sure other group leaders or members maybe wish to comment as well. I think it's really important, I suppose twofold. One, to thank the efforts of staff from across the board, not just within the council of course, but Police Scotland, Scottish Fire and Rescue and others who have supported the efforts again, not just in Dundee but across the region which was significantly hit. It's also important, I think, to recognise that not only were staff local in Dundee dealing with the situation in Dundee and the communities worst affected, but they were also supporting our colleagues in neighbouring local authorities. And this was really a coming together across the region of that support. I want to put on record my thanks and I'm sure others will likewise want to do the same for all of those efforts. And secondly, I think it's important to recognise the real harm and detriment that's been caused to many residents in communities in Dundee, some in our own ward, convener, but elsewhere as well. As we look at the clear-up operation and the damage that's been caused to those individuals. And of course, it's not just the financial detriment and the clear-up of the physical aspects, but you know, it's quite a traumatising experience, I think it's fair to say, for all of those that have been affected. And again, having spoken to the chief executive today and over the course of the weekend, I think it's clear that there is much more still to do to support our communities and to explore other options. I think it's also worth saying that we shall not rest on our laurels in any way, shape or form. And it's important that we continue to assess what happened, how it happened and if there is any further mitigation that can be deployed to ensure that we don't necessarily see a repeat. Because as we all know, climate change is not something that's going away tomorrow. It's something we're going to have to continue to contend with and this is just one illustration very close to home of the
Unfortunately, Councillor Alexander has frozen there. So while we wait for John to come back off freeze, Bailey MacPherson, I noticed that you want to make a comment as well, so I'll bring you in at this stage.
Thanks, convener. I was expecting to be after Councillor Alexander, but I completely understand the order. First of all, convener, I'm grateful to you for having the minute silence in relation to this situation in Israel and Gaza. I think we've all been shocked, really shocked and moved by the loss of life in Israel and Gaza. And we will all hope and pray for peace, peace in the region. For those of us who knew John Corrigan, and I suspect that's those of us who have been on the council for perhaps the longer periods of time. I first met John actually back in the nineteen eighties. And I think we will all acknowledge, as Bailey Sawyers has indicated, the contribution he made to the work of the council over the best part of two decades and in particular his service to his constituents in Craigie Bank. And I would just like to also add our group's appreciation to our own staff and to those staff from partner organisations for all the work that they have put in around the very significant issues caused by storm Babette and our sympathy with all the householders affected. I think staff always work above and beyond the call of duty and this was a very good example of it. Thank you, convener.
No, thank you Bailey MacPherson for those comments. I think they are appreciated. Bailey Keenan, I see you wanted to come in. I'm just going to double check that Councillor Alexander, since he was cut off on his prime, there's anything else he wants to add before I bring you in, Bailey Keenan. So, Councillor Alexander.
I think committee, thank you, convener. I think committee got the gist, so thank you very much for indulging. Apologies for the negative issue.
That's fine. Bailey Keenan?
I would have been prepared to hold back and let John speak for another half an hour if he wanted to. I mean, thanks, convener, for bringing these items forward. I think they're appropriate. Councillor Corrigan, obviously, like other councillors have, will come on to a council looking to do the best for our constituents. And he, like others, have done the same. It may be worth seeing if officers can flag up the passing of councillors in the future. I know that recently Rod Wallace passed away, probably about a month or so back. And we didn't note that at council and we probably should, given the sort of years of service that individuals give to the city, regardless of their political persuasion. And as regards to the minute silence, then you know, be a minute silence or a moment of reflection and prayer in the hope that peace comes about in the world. Because it's certainly something that's needed. Quite alarming when we see what's going on and the potential for things to get much worse than they are. And I hope that where all leaders get together and are successful, successful in getting a ceasefire there and a negotiated settlement that sees the return of people, their families and a peaceful existence going forward. With regards to the recent floods, then I hope that we do reflect as a city, some of the areas like our own in Adler, where we continually see cuts. It's not a one-in, you know, a hundred-year event. It's a regular event and we need to put mitigation in place that prevents that and prevents it from, as climate change happens, them getting worse. And obviously, in areas such as Craigill, which is effectively cut off because there was no road access into the area. Strathmartin Road flooded, houses there obviously flooded and the devastation, the families that lived there lost in desert possessions, even if it's a photograph that they can't replace because of the amount of water damage it's got, is really, really sad. But I think that we as a council need to look at what mitigations we can put in place. But really, thanks to council officers and emergency services for the efforts they put in. And I'm pleased that we went out to help others because at a time we need, that is when you need to rally together and make things happen. Thanks for that, convener.
No, thank you for those words, Bailey Keenan. And you're right about reflecting on former councillors and when Rod sadly passed away, I did pay tribute to him at the licensing board. Rod was one of my predecessors on licensing as the chair of both licensing board and licence committee. And I did take that opportunity to pay tribute on there, but you are right, we probably should have reflected that in the council at a full meeting. And I think that's something maybe ourselves and officers will take forward, take on going forward. But thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing anybody else wishing to come in, so thank you all for your indulgence and thank you for your comments on those three items. Elaine, can we now move on to the substantive agenda, please?
Thank you, convener. Item one is the declaration of interest. Are there any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody wishing to come forward, so we just move on to the next item.
Okay, there being the declarations. Item two, every Dundee learner matters EDLM strategy update.
Okay, so you have the report in front of you. I think, Councillor Crichton, you've indicated you've got a question.
Thank you, convener. This is an interesting report and it's always good to see progress. Can I ask about the school inquiry groups that all schools and early learning settings have? And the report talks about SGI having regular meetings to review progress. And what is the expectation as to how often these meet? And is the activity of SIGs monitored across the city to ensure all the proactive is consistently done?
Okay, thank you for that. We'll bring in Mrs May in the first instance, but I do know Mr Fleming is on the call as well, but Mrs May, I'll start with yourself.
Hey, thank you for the question, Councillor Crichton. Thank you, convener. I think it's probably better to hand straight to Paul Fleming to take this one. Thank you.
Thanks, Audrey, and thank you very much for the question, Councillor Crichton. Yes, every single nursery and every primary and every secondary is expected to have at least one inquiry group. And that's related to what their areas for improvement are. Again, that's related to the three Ps outlined in the report, progress, presence and participation. So it depends on their context. There's no set number of meetings that each individual school inquiry group should have. It really depends on what the improvement area is. So some will be really big in areas for improvement. They might want to meet more regularly than others. There are smaller areas for improvement. But we would ordinarily expect at least a termly meeting, but we don't have an upper or lower limit. What we do have though is an expectation about how they report the progress, including the number of meetings, but more importantly, the progress and impact of the work. They do that individually through their own individual school improvement reports. But we also then expect them to report directly to each other. So for example, between now and Christmas, the head teachers will create a Microsoft form where we aggregate all the information that comes in in the form and we put that back out to head teachers so that they're able to see what the improvement focus is in each individual school and the progress against each of those. And then when we meet together, our head teacher learning together days, so that will come in, our next one now will be in November. But the expectation will be that we select some of these, again, to share that and give the opportunities for head teachers to ask questions. Because one of the core tenets of the EDLM strategy is about sharing the expertise and sharing the learning about what works and indeed what doesn't work across the city. So hopefully that answers your question. I'm happy to go into more detail if required.
Okay, Councillor Crichton, are you happy with that?
No, thank you, Mr Fleming.
Okay, okay. Councillor Malone, you're the next with a question.
Thank you, convener. I agree with Councillor Crichton that this is a very interesting report that's been done and has been commissioned and done. And it gives us a lot of indication of what's happening in the schools. I was a bit concerned though by page nine, the second last paragraph that says, "The report concluded that evidence collected so far had suggested that these developments were beginning to have an impact on the three Ps." "There was however, much more to do to ensure that the education system that does well, for many Dundee learners can do well for them all." I read through the report and I think there's maybe, it's maybe, there are elements within the report that kind of allude to that. But I would have thought if we had a report that says much more needs to be done, we would see a series of recommendations on what we plan to do and we plan to address the findings that are in this report.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Malone. Again, I'll start with Mrs May, but again, she might wish to pass to Mr Fleming.
Yeah, I would just thank you, convener, and thanks again, Councillor Malone. I would just say, this is what came from the Robert Owen Centre, this is part of their report. And the recommendations have been discussed in the strategy group and obviously looked at, you know, the next part of our strategy going forward and what we need to focus on more in the future here. So I'll hand over to Mr Fleming to pick up some of that detail, but I absolutely agree with what you're saying. But that conversation has happened elsewhere, so I'll ask Mr Fleming to give us a wee bit more detail around that.
Thanks very much. Again, thank you, Councillor Malone, for the question. You're right that one of the main purposes of this strategy is actually to focus on those young people that are, we were starting to use the term missing out and some of those outcomes and impacts of the money, if you like. I think within the content of the report, and I'll take a point and reflect on it, in the content of the report under paragraph six point two, this is one of the reasons why we're really now focusing on making sure there's a particular focus in our SIGs about those young people missing out. So that is the clear next step and one of the reasons why we're strengthening that reporting aspect that I outlined in terms of my response to Councillor Crichton, to make sure that we're seeing that the SIGs aren't focused on the money for whom we're doing really well for already, but that they're focused on, as the first bullet point says under six point two, the young people missing out. And again, we'll make sure, as we say in the report, to provide a further update. And that's where our focus will be in terms of talking about the impact on those young people who ordinarily miss out so that we show the impact of the strategy, Councillor Malone.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Bring you back in, Councillor Malone?
Yep, thanks, convener. Jumped the gun again as usual, but never mind. Told off by the convener again, which is becoming a norm, but never mind. It's just that when I read the report, I mean, as I said, in general, it's a kind of interesting report. But when I read that paragraph, it really doesn't help us as elected councillors to understand what the thinking was behind that comment, that much more needs to be done. And maybe it's something that, Paul, you could go back to the people who produced the report and say, can you give us a list? And in that way, we can actually look at the list and see whether or not the actions that are being proposed. And I think they are. I think the actions in the report that are being proposed are actually relevant, but we don't know how they relate to the observations of the people who produce the report. So it might be worthwhile going back to them and saying, can you give us a more detailed explanation of what you mean by much more needs to be done?
I'll pass on to officers in a second. What I will say is obviously a part of the report is to bring back, one of the recommendations in the report is to bring back a report in the future. And we can certainly take all that on board and make sure that some of those things are in the next report when we bring that forward. But Mr Fleming, is there anything you want to add to that?
I'm very happy to take Councillor Malone's suggestion and speak to our professors that we work with around doing that to give some specificity. What I would say, Councillor Malone, is that we hear lots of folks across the country and across the world talk about, you know, eighty-five percent achieve this and ninety percent achieve this and talk really positively about that. In Dundee, we talk about, that's lovely and that's really important, but what about the ten percent and fifteen percent? You know, in terms of, and that's where our focus on really making sure that every Dundee learner, irrespective of their background and their ability and so on, achieves. And that's where our focus is. But yeah, I'm absolutely happy to ask our professor for further detail.
Thank you for that. And it's a lot of objective that you have of moving beyond the statistics to see how we can actually improve. So thank you for that.
No, thank you for your comments and your questions, Councillor Malone. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay Elaine, can we move on to the next item, please?
Thank you, convener. Item three, leading learners programme. You have the report before you.
Okay, Councillor Coleman, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Mr convener. Figure four, five point, five point four on page thirty-four shows a wide variance in schools regarding pupils achieving or exceeding their working grade from a relatively low sixty-six percent to a very impressive ninety-two percent. And the narrative alludes to demographics being a factor in that variance. But does this actually fully explain that variance or are there other factors at play as well?
Okay, thank you for your question. Again, I'll pass to officers. So again, I'll start with Mrs May, but I suspect you might want to pass to Mr Fleming. But I'll let you in first of all.
Thank you, convener. And again, thank you to Councillor Coleman for his question. Yeah, there are other variances and I'm going to hand over to our chief education officer to pick up that question too. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor. Yeah, and can I just say that this is an example of some of the strategies we're doing for those young people missing out? Because this piece of work is really about young people who are struggling to maintain their working grade. So it's very much an intervention to support those young people. Absolutely. Councillor Coleman, there are many different factors involved, including demographics. It can also be very individual, including attendance rates and so on. So the school, the individual schools have all of this data behind every single reason why pupils missing out to help that pupil moving forward if they're still involved in some very year groups, but also to help us learn. I have a meeting, I see Jodie's on the call, who's our, it leaves our pedagogy team of a meeting with Jodie Barclay tomorrow to think about and look at the learning from this piece of work, including the factors. So not just saying it's about the demographic, but specifically looking in to see what the reasons were so that we can help inform the iteration of the programme for this academic session. So yes, many variables and we are aware of these variables. Individual schools tackle them at individual pupil level and we're learning what they are to help inform the next stage of the programme this year. And again, I'm happy to provide further detail after if you would like that, Councillor Coleman.
Are you happy with that response, Councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else wishing to come in. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. Okay, Elaine, can we move on to the next item, please?
Thank you. External members of the committee will now leave. And we'll go to item four, our promise twenty-one to twenty-three, annual update and twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-two, twenty-five plan. And you have the report before you.
Okay, thank you for that. So Bailey Keenan, I see you're the first person who has a question.
Yeah, convener, it's in relation to the positive destinations for looked after children. And I see it has dipped out considerably to eighty-three, eighty-three point three percent. You know, given that there is a relatively small number of individuals involved, I'm wondering what can we do to make a real difference? You know, I see positive destinations, you know, could be as little as a few hours of training a week. Where, you know, I would like to think that a positive destination would be more along the lines of advancing your career through in some way and potentially being in full-time employment. But, you know, what can officers do to make sure that we don't have this number of young people that we should be trying our best for slipping through the net, no managing into that positive destination or more meaningful possible? Or more meaningful positive destination.
Okay, thank you for that question. Again, I'll pass to Mrs May and then obviously on to other officers where necessary. So Mrs May.
Yeah, thank you very much for the, the question Bailey Keenan and thanks, thanks convenor. Yeah, there is quite a lot of work going on in the background. As you say, there's a small number of, of young people and of course. They're, they're individual and have varying and different individual needs and the, the status around their care is very different on an individual basis as well. There's, there's work going on just now and very much in partnership with city development, economic development. And both my heads of service are involved in that Paul and Glen. But I'll pass to Glen to talk about more detail in terms of the question that, that Bailey Keenan has asked. Thank you.
Thank you Bailey Keenan. And again, you're, you're right to say that it's a big percentage drop, but relatively small numbers. And overall, we're making progress in, in this area. The youth participation group that Audrey alludes to includes a subgroup, which is a specific focus on the needs of care experienced school leavers. One of the things we're exploring at the moment is the development of MAs across not just the council. But also city partners where we have a flexible mentoring type approach towards their employment. We think that will help, given the nature extent of, of their needs. But over and above that, you'll see in the report that the action plan includes priorities in relation to transitions. From childhood into adulthood, including via the new multidisciplinary adolescent team. And the action plan also includes actions in relation to continuing care. We're thinking that if we get all those right, that if the foundation is there, the platform is there for them to receive good and proper support in housing. And the offer is there from employers that will sustain a positive trend in relation to that going forwards.
Okay, thank you for that. Bailey Keenan, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, okay.
Yep, okay. Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thanks convenor. I've just got a brief question, but regarding an important topic. The way concerning care weavers. Just the way we're looking for some reassurance from officers that obviously care weavers, when they're starting out in life as, as, you know, young adults. I've got enough to do, given the, the start of funding life. And it's just really like some assurance from officers that, you know, the council will do its best to support people post, you know, post care regarding housing. Insofar as I wouldn't like any of these care weavers to be winding up reporting as homeless, for example.
Sorry, I'll start off by unmute myself, that'd be helpful.
That's okay. I thought that was me convenor, sorry.
No, no, it honestly was me. So I've just seen Elaine's, Elaine put her hand up. So I don't know if Elaine wants to answer this or Glen.
Yeah, happy to start. And I'm sure that Glen will want to come in. We do have protocols in place between housing and Glen's team, just to ensure that we have a proper assessment of the needs of the individual. Both in terms of housing and in terms of support and how that can be provided through both services. But I wonder if Glen wants to say anymore around that.
Thank you Elaine, thank you for the question councillor Duncan. I would also add that numbers in continuing care are increasing. So the numbers of young people remaining. With foster carers or in the houses is also increasing. So we're sustaining that support through and into early adulthood. That we're re-provisioning what used to be fair burn house, young people's house into an older young person's supported accommodation unit. Again, to build capacity in, in that regard. And that we've also developed a range of different satellite flats options with neighbourhood services from there as well. So the overall aim is to build capacity so that there's a range of different options available. Depending upon the need of different young people, so we can suitably match whatever is in their best interests. Notwithstanding of course, that sometimes young people think they've got more independent living skills than they actually have. And then that sometimes warrants a conversation around what they can do, what they can't do, what they should do and what, what they shouldn't do. A supportive conversation in that, in that regard.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm much obliged for that reassurance because I think it's a challenging or, you know, potentially a challenging area. And in fairness, I think that officers in the council have got actually quite a good record on doing, doing its level best to help people. So thanks for that.
No, thank you for that councillor Duncan. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in. So can this report be agreed? Okay, Elaine, can we move on to the final item please?
Thank you. Item five, progressive community learning and development plan twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four, and this is for no.
Okay, Billy McPherson, I see that you have a question.
I, I do indeed convenor, and it's about the information on page hundred and four. And in particular, around adult learners will develop their own learning programmes. And if it alludes to the work supported by officers, the work of the adult learning. Sort of independent associations, I suppose they are, BIRA in Brothby Ferry and Hira in the West End. And I should say, there's a minor typo because it talks about here. Resuming a vibrant programme for adults in the east of the city. I think that should read the west of the city. But my, my question really is, I had understood traditionally that officers helped support three groups. I think the other one being originally Salah, later Shala for Stobswell and Hilltown. And I was wondering, is that no longer active? And if that is the case, how do we sustain and build groups to ensure that they're there for the long term? I'm just really like some clarification as to what, as I, as I say, I'd understood it was three groups that officers were supporting, not two.
Okay, thanks. I'm looking to see which officer would be the best one to respond, although if it's Marie or.
I'm guessing it will be Marie.
Yeah, I was just trying to see who was on my screen. I couldn't see everybody. So thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you convenor and thanks councillor McPherson. You are correct that there were three adult education associations. Unfortunately, Shala has disbanded. However, we have worked with the other two organisations to pick up some of their activities. And we also are working to support local management groups in community centres. So although they maybe don't come under the, the banner of an adult education association by name. They actually fulfill a very similar function. So we, we still actually have quite, quite a vibrant programme happening in, in community centres. And apologies for that, that typo. I will make sure that that's corrected.
That's, that's appreciated. That's a really minor aspect, but I'm very grateful for your reply, Marie. I, I don't, I don't think anybody minds basically how adult learning is, you know, is delivered, whether it's a local management group. Whether it's a, an independent association like BIRA or HIRA. The bottom line is it's good that the department continues to support adult learning and I'm very reassured by what Maria had to say. So thank you for that, Marie.
Thank you for your comments Bailey McPherson. Councillor Anderson, I see you have a comment.
Thank you convenor. Just to say how much I welcome this report and all the amazing work that's been done. And I couldn't let it go by without looking at page seventy and the work done by the, the community learning development ESOL team. And just to make sure that everybody is aware that a couple of weeks ago. The, the Dundee team along with Clackmann and Shaw Fife and WEA won an award at the Cosla Excellence Awards. So this was for building skills together refugee integration programme. And the team were awarded excellent people, excellent outcomes award as part of the excellence award. So just thought we should celebrate something this evening and just to make sure that people knew that that was a great result.
Yeah, no, thank you. And congratulations to the team who won the award. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I know colleagues, especially my deputy was able to attend. And congratulate them on the night in person. But so certainly I think from the, the whole committee, I think thanks should be passed to that, to that whole team and well done on that award. Councillor McHugh, I see you've got your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I've just got one wee question in relation to the format of the annual report, which starts on page seventy three of our bundle. Under each section, there's the heading, you know, what CLD partners will do. And then it says, how will we know? And I'm really not sure I understand what that means because underneath every what will we know? It seems to be the narrative and just explains what we will do. So how will we know what?
Yeah, I'll pass back to Marie.
Yes, I, I could come back in there. We have further detailed information which goes on to Pentana where we're reporting. The, the numbers and the, the narrative about each of them. So I think as you maybe can appreciate, this is a rather lengthy document and report which we're asked to produce in terms of a plan. So we, we have the, the detailed narrative in the, the Pentana reporting system. But we could note that for future reference that if it may be more helpful to add some of that in.
No, thank you for that. Are you happy with that councillor McHugh?
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to come in. So can this report be agreed? Yep, with every nodding. And with that, that's children, families and communities. So thank you all.
Thank you convenor. The next committee is the neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management committee.
Welcome Elaine, over to yourself.
Thank you convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
I don't see any hands up or any comments. So I'll take that. There's none. Can we move on Elaine please?
Thank you convenor. Item two, regulation of social housing in Scotland, annual assurance statement. You have the report before you.
This report notes the requirements of Scottish Housing Regulator's framework for the regulation of social housing in Scotland. It seeks approval for the annual assurance statement for submission to the housing regulator within appendix one. And the publication of the statement covering the period of the first of April twenty two to thirty first of March twenty three. Councillor Coleman, I see you've got a question.
Thank you, Mr convenor. With regard to the seven day limit for stays in B and B accommodation being breached. And some forty seven occasions in twenty two, twenty three, as referred to four point one six. This is quite concerning, as I'm sure we would all agree, it's infinitely preferable that B and B accommodation was not used. Can I ask therefore, so far in twenty three, twenty four, has the situation improved?
Elaine, I'll bring you in. That's okay.
Thank you convenor. I, I would want to, to, to say that we've always prided ourselves within the city of not having to use bed and breakfast. And that situation had been prevalent for, for over ten years within the city. So this is unprecedented that we've had to use bed and breakfast to this extent. But it's something that we're working hard to try and reduce the number of breaches going forward. I would say that we're not alone. The Solace report highlights that across all local authorities, the pressures around homelessness are creating. The over dependence on, on the use of bed and breakfast going forward. But we're working really hard to get those numbers down as quickly as possible. And I'll ask the, the head of, of housing and construction, Louise Butcher, to come in and just give you some information around where we are at present.
Louise. Yeah, thank you for that Elaine and thank you councillor Flynn and councillor Coleman. I would highlight that we are seeing an increase. So we are unfortunately having to continue the use of bed and breakfast at this time. And as Elaine said, that's reflected nationally with the pressure surrounding homelessness. To give some reassurance, however, I would highlight that we look to use bed and breakfast as the last resort. So we will always try and find alternative suitable accommodation. And where we can and have to use bed and breakfast, it's for the minimum time possible. And I look to move residents on as quickly as possible.
Answer your question councillor Coleman.
Yes, thank you, Mr convenor.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see any other questions. So I'll take this report as agreed and we can send it into the regulator. Thank you. Next one Elaine please.
Item three, Dundee strategic housing investment plan twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine, this is for approval.
This report seeks approval of strategic housing investment plan twenty four, twenty nine is set with an appendix one. Can I just note a couple of typos, just for accuracy? Table two should note that the social rented is five hundred and three and table three should be five, five, three, not five, three, three. The ship is a key statement of affordable housing development priorities in the local authority area. Scottish Government Affordable Housing Investment Programme resource planning with seventy point five million from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. It's been increased to eighty nine point one million up to the period of twenty six. And I see any questions? Councillor Crichton, I think you were first.
Thank you convenor. With regards to the statistics in table one on page ten. And can I ask if the estimated final completion date is this December for Derby Street is going to be met? Well, I appreciate that pandemic was a factor in the delays. It's still an extremely long time indeed to take for completion. And would officers agree that lessons have been learned from this project? As we don't wish to see these kind of delays in future, but I do appreciate the pandemic obviously was a factor.
Yeah, thanks for that. I think acknowledgement of some of the issues there were quite clear. See Elaine has a handle.
Thank you convenor and thank you councillor Crichton for the question. We're working really hard with the developer to ensure that the December twenty twenty three. Timescales are met and we have had significant meetings with senior executives within the organisation to get that reassurance. And that those timescales will be met. In terms of lessons learned, obviously this, this contract was affected by COVID significantly. However, there have been other issues with the contract and we will certainly be looking at how those aren't repeated in the future. Thank you.
So that's your question, Michael?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Bailey Keenan please.
Sorry convenor, just in, in, in relation to Derby Street. It makes reference in the report to the risks to the programme being delivered. And, and when I look at these, I wonder if how many of these relate to Derby Street? Or should we just actually be admitting that the choice of developer or contractor was just absolutely the wrong one? And that the embarrassment of having to say that, given that we're sort of, must be about eight year down the line for start to no handed over yet. Can I ask whether, when these houses are eventually handed over, is that the date that's in there? Is that relating to the houses that the ship has funded through housing associations as well? And in relation to the Park Hotel site, if the completion dates the twenty, two thousand twenty five, when will the work be started on site?
Thanks for that. Elaine, would you like to answer that or Louise be?
Could ask Louise Butcher, head of housing and construction to come in on those comments.
Louise, please.
Of course. Thank you for that councillor Flynn. And I think in terms of the first point around the market challenges that are noted within the report. Although not, not here at the time of Derby Street start, and I do know that Derby Street has been, you know, an extremely challenging site. When we think of the topography and the site conditions from the demolition through to the development. So I don't want to underplay how significant and challenging that site has been in terms of its delivery. Although I know the points made Bailey Keenan and referenced, but Elaine's obviously highlighted just earlier in terms of. You know, potential learnings that we need to take from this particular development moving forward. In terms of the December date, that's looking at the full site. Excuse me, and the funding does look at the overall affordable housing investment grant funding for the development. In terms of the Park Hotel site, I will just clarify the proposed start on site date. And if it's okay, I could share that with members after this meeting.
Yeah, thanks Lucy. If you can pass on to all members, that'd be fine. Kevin?
Yeah, convenor, I'm still no, I'm still unsure about the Derby Street one because given that it's taken so long. Would, would it be fair to say that council will forget how to spell their name? And they want to be on any other tender list coming forward? Given, given the, the length of time it's taken that developer to come up with the goods.
I think it's been answered Kevin in some respects with regards to the challenges of the site, but the due diligence done by the officers to make sure that any tendering process gets put through. But I'll bring in Louise again, just to make any further comment.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think there's much further to add councillor Flynn and Bailey Keenan. I think what we will look to do as officers is ensure we comply in terms of procurement regulations. And, and look at, through our sourcing strategy and our revised procurement strategy and guidance. Look at the associated risks and procurement routes, which will be brought back to committee for. Particular projects of a value for that approval. So that review should pick up on, on some of the associated risks that, that have been identified.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Councillor McHugh, you're next please.
Yes, thank you.
Appendix one shows the plan from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine and lists a total of one thousand and eighty one units planned over the period. The previous iteration of this plan presented to committee in September twenty twenty two showed a total of one thousand two hundred eighty seven units planned. These are connected totals, by the way, taking account of the errors already noted. This represents a reduction of two hundred units over the reporting period. And highlights for me the limitation of scrutinising a plan rather than the performance of the plan. I mean, what we really need to know is how many units we have actually delivered against our plan. And it may be that this is reported elsewhere at a different time. But can officers advise when council will see a report on the number of actual completions rather than planned completions? And comment, please, on whether such variations as we see here with the reduction of two hundred units is typical and therefore needs to be factored into future plans?
Louise, please.
Yeah, of course, and thank you for that question, councillor McKeer. I think in terms of the reduction of the units, the plan does highlight the market challenges. Hence why we do this annual review to look at what the proposed delivery is. And the three tables that we've got set out within the plan look at, yes, what is committed, but also what is pipeline projects? And that can vary as we look at this year on year, depending on the challenges as noted within. It might also be, for example, the particular challenges of a site or the cost viability of a site that determines whether or not it then remains within the plan. So it is important that we undertake this annual review, given it is a bit of a moving feast. In terms of your second question, so in terms of council completions. We obviously do report in particular council completions through our neighbourhood services service plan and also through our engagement through the housing best value review group. But I'm happy to provide further information to members in respect of the overall completions, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, thanks for that, Elaine. Sorry, Louise. And I think it's worth noting that a lot of the developers are not Dundee City Council. And we've got to rely on them actually building a lot of the properties were actually listed within this document itself and the challenges they have as well as ourselves. So that's your question, Dorothy.
Yes, I'm happy with that. And if Louise is going to provide further information, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. And I don't see any further questions, so I'll take this as agreed. Thank you very much. Next report, please, Elaine.
Thank you. Item four, review of rents and other housing charges. You have the report before you.
The purpose of the report is to set out the proposed rent and other housing charges for the financial year twenty four twenty five and seek approval to consult with tenants on these actual proposals. Officers have delivered two briefing sessions to elected members over the last past week, past week, sorry. In addition to briefing the Dundee Federation of Tents Association Executive Group. And the outcome of the consultation will present to committee on January twenty twenty four. Any questions or comments? Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks very much, convener. I have a couple of questions. And one is regarding the proposed increase in the shelter tenant's charge, which is the best part of a ten percent increase, which is obviously pretty significant. And I think we can all understand particularly the wage increase and so on. Because obviously the vast bulk of that charge is to meet the cost of the much appreciated warden service. However, I know from the briefing, and I'm very grateful for the briefing, one of which I attended earlier today. And we were advised that seventy seven percent of our shelter tenants are on housing benefit. Or, you know, and get that housing support and therefore will not personally have to meet that increase that will be absorbed through housing benefit. That obviously leaves over twenty percent of our tenants who are not in receipt of benefit. And I'm just really wondering if there are proposals in light of the increase, which is obviously on top of the actual rental increase, for some form of take up campaign specifically aimed at those who have to meet the shelter tenant charge to ensure that all are getting the housing benefit they're entitled to. I have a second question, but I'll, as it's completely unrelated, I'll just ask that this one in the first instance, if that's okay, convener. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Elaine, off line, yeah, please.
Yeah, I think that's a very helpful suggestion, Bailey McPherson. And I'm sure that we could work with Jackie Capell's team to do some surgeries within the shelter complexes so that we can ensure that there's a maximisation of benefit uptake. So happy to take that away and work that through with colleagues and corporate services.
Yeah, thanks for that.
I'm very grateful for that. My second question's completely unrelated to that. And it's really about the information in nine point three about the way in which the consultation will take place. And I think, to be fair, we've had a pretty reasonable level of tenant participation over the years in this. However, my particular question, because it's fine putting stuff on websites and fine having stuff on social media and so on. But it's about the last bullet point at nine point three, which is face to face engagement with tenants. When I've asked about that in the past, it's largely been around shelter tenants. And I'm just really wondering if there are any specific proposals for face to face engagement with tenants generally over and above the other things that are in the other five bullet points.
Yeah, thanks for that. I think we've always been, as you said, actually very successful in reaching out to tenants and residents to actually get that feedback. And have a challenge them to actually beat last year's target again, to make sure we actually do a lot more consultation and get that feedback. Elaine, would you like to come in on that one?
Thank you, convener. Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I'll ask Louise just to pick up some of the detail around the consultation. But equally, we've always been looking at new ways that we can engage with more tenants across the piece. And we've certainly been in dialogue with Dundee Federation of Tents Association to see how we can engage more with them. And we will also be addressing their annual meeting, which will be face to face as well. So we'll be able to have that discussion with their membership face to face on the increased proposals. But Louise, is there anything other that you would like to add to that?
Yeah, no, thanks for that, Elaine. And I think, as Elaine just highlighted, so the general meeting with the DFTA is for all our tenants to attend. So we'll be attending that in November to give an overview of the rent consultation and to brief tenants and support them in terms of responding. But I think also to highlight in terms of the face to face. So when our housing staff are out having face to face engagement with tenants, so it might be that repairs inspection. It might be something to do around housing support or sustainment. The officers will be tasked to speak to tenants about the rent consultation, make sure tenants are aware of them and able to support them to make a return if they're not able to do so themselves. Or at least get them a survey that they could submit and return on their behalf.
Okay, I'm grateful for both responses. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Billy Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. My question was similar to that of Bailey McPherson regarding the sheltered warden service charge and the big increase there. And I understand why that's happening. And I'm pleased to hear about the take up campaign that will be to make sure as many people who are entitled to housing benefit receive it. But that will still leave some who won't be getting any assistance towards the cost of the charge. And I have had one or two tenants say to me that should there be an increase that they can't afford, then they'd be seeking to disconnect from the sheltered network. And I just wondered in those circumstances, what support will be available for those sheltered tenants that receive no assistance with their rent and are finding it very difficult to pay the sheltered service charge? Is there any provision being made to support those tenants?
I think Elaine touched on that, Bailey Scott, with regards to getting Jackie Capell's team and working with them to actually do that. Liaising with the tenants who might find things difficult. But Elaine, would you like to come back in on that?
Yeah, certainly we'll be working with our colleagues in corporate services. And we're more than happy if there are any specific cases, Bailey Scott, that you're aware of, that you want us to speak to specifically. Then we're happy to arrange one to one meetings with those individuals to see how we can support them.
That's excellent. Thank you very much for that response.
Thank you. Councillor McKeer, please.
Thank you. Unsurprisingly, my question was very similar to Bailey McPherson's and Derek's. So I want to make a comment just to say that we need to be aware, excuse me, that although seventy seven percent, it's been reported of our sheltered tenants will receive housing benefit, they won't all receive full housing benefit. So, you know, these increases will still affect some of them, a number of them. At the briefing today, very helpful briefing earlier on today. I raised the issue of the sheltered tenants from Balloonie Field and Brinton, who are part of the heating scheme. And they're facing a rent increase of three and a half percent, charges up ten percent, and their heating charges up over twenty percent. And I have asked if that total increase in monetary terms could be costed and advised prior to us sitting round the table again in January to approve the rent increase.
Yep, thanks for that, councillor McKeer. Yeah, I was there today as well. And I think I was agreed that would be provided to you in advance of that meeting, the next meeting in January. Firstly, can I just talk about the briefings? Can I just apologize because they were actually over recess? And we managed to squeeze a couple in, one last week and one this morning. Apologies for that because obviously recess in the committees just didn't match up this time. But hopefully going forward, the future briefings will be within normal council time rather than through recess next year and onwards. Does anyone like to come back, Louise? Elaine, sorry.
Just to clarify the point that councillor McKeer made around those on partial benefit. If they are on partial benefit, then any increase in the sheltered housing service charge will be covered through the benefit system.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I see no more questions or comments, so we'll just take this report as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, please, Elaine.
Thank you, convener. Item five, tenders received by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
Tenders are before you for a number of investment, one point three million in our housing stock for new windows and doors, euro bins and some demolition work of some walls, et cetera. Any comments or questions on that? I don't see any, so that's the business for neighbourhood. It's, sorry, neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the city governance committee.
Good evening, folks. I'm going to apologize in advance because my tech is not working for me today. So I've had messages from colleagues to say I've frozen multiple times. So I not only have my laptop, but I have my phone and my iPad for good measure. So if at any point I do drop signal, please give me a couple of minutes and I will rejoin. But with that, Arlene, we shall kick on with the agenda, please.
Thanks, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Any declarations? No, I see nobody reaching. Thank you. We'll take that as agreed.
No, no, no.
No, sorry. Was that you, Charlie?
Yeah, it's just in relation to me being a member of the Leisure and Culture Dundee Board, who've been having discussions about this, the captain situation. So I would declare an interest in that. And I'm sure the other members of Leisure and Culture Dundee would be in the same, elected members who sit on the board would be in the same position.
Thanks very much, Charlie. Yeah, we'll take that as read. Appreciate that. If there are no others, I should say. Arlene, we'll move on.
Yeah, that takes us to item two, which is minutes of the pension subcommittee and pension board, which was held on the twenty sixth of June. And it's submitted for information and record purposes.
This is agreed. Thank you very much.
Item three, city plan for Dundee twenty twenty two to twenty thirty two, annual report for twenty two twenty three. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
This is the first annual progress report on the city plan, as Arlene says, twenty twenty two to twenty thirty two. It was agreed by the Dundee Partnership on the fourteenth of September and the Dundee Partnership Management Group committed to bringing regular updates back on their individual organisations for noting as well. Members are asked to know the progress made since the launch of the city plan. And of course, it's important to emphasize that this is the city plan, not the council plan. And obviously there is elements of crossover, but of course, this is much broader in terms of the approach and the involvement of key partners in taking forward that strategic approach. The key issues that we all know are incredibly important to the city. The summary of performance indicators by priority shows that overall fifty percent of indicators have improved compared to the previous year. And given all of the challenges that we have faced and are continuing to face, I think it's important to recognize that that is welcome progress. Fifteen of the thirty indicators have been met or are within five percent of the ambitious targets as well. So recognizing that improvement, it's also clear, and I think we're all committed to seeing continuous improvements. And there's a number of other actions which I think are detailed within the report and worth highlighting in terms of the work on issues like drug and alcohol recovery services, local fairness initiatives such as Lynn Lathan and Stobswell West. And of course, the creation of a Dundee Economic Advisory Group to provide regular feedback with local businesses and engagement as well. So I'll open up for any questions at this point. Craig, sorry.
That's okay. No, no, thanks. Thanks, convener. Just wondered if your IT was playing off again, that's all.
It's just on a go slow, I think.
Aren't we all? No, look, yeah, as you say, there's some positive indicators in there. My sort of regards are really around recycling. If we have a look at the information on page twenty regarding the percentage of household wastes recycled, it's quite a bit short of where the city actually needs it to be, which is my first concern, but it also seems to be heading in the wrong direction, having dropped from thirty four point seven percent in two thousand and twenty twenty one down to thirty two point seven percent in two thousand and twenty one twenty two. So I'm wondering, although the finalized figures for two thousand and twenty two twenty three are apparently not available yet, which seems quite a while away in the making to me, but that's another side. But I'm just wondering, what assurances can officers give us in light of these figures that we're actually making progress? And we're going to get things heading in the right direction? The report does indicate that officers are developing a new app. And although any initiatives are obviously welcome, this issue will not be resolved by an app alone. Well, certainly I don't think so. And I'm wondering what assurances officers can give therefore that we can make a real positive difference to these recycling figures?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Craig. A really important question, particularly given the situation the city finds itself in in terms of where we are positioned in recycling rates and what we need to do going forward. So Tony, can I bring you in at this point to offer some response to that question?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor Duncan. Yeah, this was the subject that has been the subject of much debate in previous committees, most recently the June scrutiny committee. And a detailed response has been provided to all members on this. So I'm not going to get into the specific details other than to provide the committee again with an assurance that we're through a whole range of issues and actions taken forward, looking to make that positive improvement that councillor Duncan has alluded to. What I can update the committee tonight on is the twenty twenty two to twenty three figures were just released last week. And I'm pleased to advise that recycling rate is in an upward trajectory for the first time in a long time. And we're on target to hit the year two target of thirty six point four percent next year. Thanks, convener.
Okay, now thanks.
Thanks, Matt, Tony, Craig.
Thanks very much indeed for that, Mr Boyle. A positive note to end on. And it just might have been helpful, if at all possible, that we could have perhaps had sight of these most recent figures. And I simply look forward to seeing them. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Craig. Okay, Michael?
Thank you, convener. The council rightly has an ambitious target to reduce the number of children across our city living in poverty. I hope we all can come together on this by half by twenty thirty. And N Child Poverty Stats estimate that it stood at twenty one twenty two at twenty seven point one percent for Dundee children as opposed to twenty four point five percent across Scotland. Our year one target, as shown on page thirty two, was twenty one point four percent with a year three target of nineteen point three percent. But there appears to be no actual data on twenty two twenty three. When will this data be available? And my group especially, we acknowledge the challenges with the cost of living for families. And we just want to see if this target, if there's any hope that this target will meet in the short or medium. And we just want to see if this target, if there's any hope that this target will meet in the short or medium term.
Thanks for the question. You're right, Michael. I think it's one that's unanimous in terms of our focus on driving down those figures. We all know that levels of poverty and deprivation are far too high amongst communities across Dundee. And that's why we've had such a laser focus on driving forward with that action plan. And of course, there was a recent report that came forward to committee which set out the action plan in terms of poverty and child poverty specifically. And there's been ongoing engagement with groups and organisations across the city to make sure that there's a collective effort to drive down those stats. So there is a regular reporting mechanism that comes forward through committee that provides updates. But if I can perhaps go to Andrew in the first instance, Andrew?
Yeah, I will double check the exact date the figures come out. But they normally come out just before we bring the local child poverty annual report, which is normally in June each year. So I think they come out around about May time. So I'll double check that and come back to committee.
Thanks, Andrea. We'll have that information circulated, Michael, just for absolute clarification.
Yeah, convenor, if we can get that information, it'd be great. It's just, yeah, when I'm looking at the figures, I can't see any. And if I got to see any, then we also can't scrutinize it and we can't learn. And we acknowledge as a group, we don't just want to have a go. These are young people and we want to cross the party help in any way we can.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. George, sorry to put you on the spot. Can you put yourself on mute, please? Thank you. Dorothy, next.
Thank you. I have a comment on the format of the report. I do love an action plan. All of the actions in the plan are marked as in progress, except one which is marked as completed. In terms of measuring progress, I think it would be more useful to show where individual actions are on track or not. And if they're not on track, then they could be marked as check progress. All of them, as I say, you know, are marked in progress. Well, they will be. All of them will be. That's inevitable until they're completed. But it would be useful to have that distinction, whether they're, assuming they're on, they're in progress, whether they're on track or not. Could officers maybe consider that we change?
Thanks for the question, Dorothy. I'll go to Andrea.
I'm happy to look at any improvements, but the little green indicators are obviously shown in progress, but the progress percentage shows where they are in terms of completion from nothing to a hundred percent. So that's to try and show that whilst it is in progress, you've got an indicator of how far on it is.
Yes, I understand that. But on track, we'd, you know, should we be at fifty percent at this stage of the plan? Or should we be at eighty percent or ninety percent? If it was, if we could show whether it's on track or not, that's a bit more information that we can use when we're scrutinizing the plan as to whether that it's where it should be at this stage of the plan.
Okay, I'm happy to take that offline and have a look at it. And I can come back to committee if we can make that change or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Willie.
Thanks, convenor. Councillor Crichton raises a very, very important subject in terms of child poverty. And I think it would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge what has been described by a professor as the game changer, is the Scottish Child Payment, paying up to twenty five pounds a week, which was described recently by an academic specializing in this field as the biggest single development or initiative, rather, to tackle child poverty since the reunification of Germany, which is quite, quite an achievement. So I really think we want to put that on record. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Absolutely. And I think both recognizing how important those national measures are, as well as the work of what we've done locally through partnership with the Dundee Food Network and a whole host of other initiatives, including Fuel Well and the Cost of Living summits, which have delivered direct benefit into the communities. Are probably one of the hardest times when we talk about poverty that anyone has faced, certainly in recent memory or my lifetime. I'll go on to Derek next.
Thank you, convenor. My wifi keeps dropping in and out, so apologies if this has already been asked. I wanted to ask a question about the level of obesity of children in Dundee, which is quite a shocking figure of more than quarter of children. And of course, that's storing up huge problems for the quality of life when they reach middle age and the impact it's likely to have on health services as well going forward. And there's a long list of actions that have been taken to deal with that during two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. So I just wondered if there's any indication during the course of this year that is showing that all these initiatives are really starting to make a difference? And then come that the next report will see quite a drop off in that twenty six point six percent figure?
Thanks for the question, Derek. Maybe come to Andrew in just a moment, if that's all right. Because it's probably, you know, a multi-agency response that's required in that respect. And I know this has been a topic of conversation in the sense of being discussed at NHS T side board on occasions through the action reports as well. So I think there's a whole multitude of actions, as you rightly say, that will be taken forward, including encouraging healthy eating in our schools and providing healthy meals in our schools through T side contracts as well. I also think that there is a role to play in terms of ongoing education about what good looks like in terms of healthy meals, et cetera. So I see actually Audrey's popped up on my screen. Perhaps Audrey, you can kick us off. If there's anything else to add, I'll bring in other officers. Thanks.
Yeah, it was, it was just to reassure committee that there's a lot of work ongoing. And it's very much a partnership approach because we're taking a whole systems approach to child healthy weight. And so very much led in partnership with NHS T side and public health partners and across T side. So it's not just a Dundee priority, it's across the entirety of T side. And that's why it's been led through the T side additional improvement collaborative, where we're bringing together our colleagues from the various partners. So absolutely, I could take that off table and get some data out to folks sooner or to our next committee. Thanks, convenor.
Thanks, Audrey. You happy with that, Derek?
Yes, thank you.
Grand. I think that's all the questions. I do have one further thing just to, and apologies for the last minute nature of this. So I do have a slight amendment to the report. And I'll ask committee services just to circulate at this point in time. And it's a matter of practicality more than anything else in terms of the membership of the subgroups. And so as some of you may well know, at the present time, I, for example, deputize as chair for the Climate Leadership Group. And we are currently in the process of identifying a new chair. And in the meantime, that means I'm convening or chairing those meetings. And I think from a practical sense, it wouldn't make much sense for me to rescind and remove myself from those discussions whilst we've not identified the next chair of that group. So in practical terms, what I'm asking for is members to agree to this slight amendment, just to ensure that there's continuity in the meantime as we progress with the recruitment of chairs for those roles. So that's the amendment. I'll ask for a second, if I need one. Bailey Sawyers.
convenor, if it's necessary, I'll formally second.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see anybody suggesting they're otherwise minded. So if I can take this as agreed, that would be much appreciated. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, Arlene.
That takes us on to item four, capital expenditure monitoring, twenty twenty three, twenty four, and this is for noting.
Yep, usual report. So I'll just open it for any questions or comments. Fraser?
Thank you, convenor. Usual report, but slightly concerning situation regarding the large decreases over just the past month in the projected out turns of some one point seven five four million for general services capital. And HRA are whacking five point one eight five million in just a month. So I have a second question, as you'd say, on a completely unrelated matter. But I was just really wondering if officers could indicate, because obviously this rather gives the impression that the outturn is continuing to decrease, the projected outturn is continuing to decrease. And I'm just really wondering how confident they are that we will be back on an even keel in relation to ensuring that the outturn is as close to the original capital budget by the thirty first of March, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question, Fraser. So I'll just go straight to Robert to offer a response.
Thank you, convenor. So we've been working with services just to try and get as accurate a position on the forecast out turn as possible. This is something that the auditors have highlighted and will be discussing, I think, further on Wednesday at scrutiny committee. We've been trying to make sure that projects which are in the plan, which are optimistic things that we're hoping to do, rather than things that we're definitely going to do, are reflected in the forecast out turn. And we're in a position to bring forward projects where we're successful, for example, in securing additional funding. So that the programme, I think, for the council is ambitious. And therefore, we don't always get everything done. But we're starting to see now delivery on some significant big projects, in particular the school, et cetera, which will start to see an increase in spending towards the end of the year, which will hopefully alleviate councillor McPherson's concerns.
I'm grateful to Mr Emmett for that. He actually mentioned the East End Community Campus. And I think, you know, I think anyone who's seen the aerial photographs following Storm Babitt must be more than a little concerned by just the extent of flooding on the site. And I think not for tonight. It's very, very obvious. It's an immediate term afterwards. But I think it might be useful with that in mind if officers did give elected members an update on that. We were given reassurances during the planning stage that we, you know, that there wasn't a flooding aspect. And we fully accept that Storm Babitt has had very significant impacts at various locations across Dundee. But I think it would be useful to find out that the, you know, to, you know, that we get that reassurance reaffirmed, but also any impact on the delivery of that during the current financial year as it moves forward, obviously, to hopefully fruition in the timescale approved by committee. My second question really is around the item at five point six point one. That's the Harris Academy extension. And it indicates, now, this is really at almost opening stage. And this alludes to the planned upgrade and switch over to the electricity substation. And I understand the background to this, and it does indicate that this won't be done until next summer. That won't, as it says, disrupt the curriculum delivery due to revised programming. What I was really wondering is, is there any actual impact on the usability of the extension? Or is it simply a matter of the extension being usable up to summer of twenty twenty four? And this substation switch over, if you like, taking place during the summer holidays next year?
Thanks, Fraser, for those questions. I'll go to the chief executive on the first one in terms of East End campus. It'll come as no surprise that myself and the convenor have been asking very similar questions in terms of future proofing and looking at those issues. So Greg, over to you.
Yeah, thanks, convenor, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. In terms of your query, just to give you that assurance that I met with Neil Martin this morning, and Neil, along with the city engineer, will be looking at the flooding which occurred. And we will come back to elected members once we've carried out the necessary due diligence on the site. So I suspect Neil's team will be on that quickly, but we just need time to consider the information. So I can provide that assurance.
Thanks, Greg. And the second part of your question on the substation, I'll just see if Neil can offer some insight. Neil?
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. So I can confirm the work on the substation has been carried out and it won't affect the use of the extension. It's some other internal work within the facility. So that's why it's worded as it won't disrupt the curriculum.
I'm very grateful for both responses. They're both very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that's the last question on this item. So can I take this as agreed, please? Grand. Thank you very much. Arlene.
Item five, revenue monitoring, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. This is for approval.
Again, standard report. You'll see detail of the variance in the explanation against those. But if there's any questions, Fraser?
Thanks, convenor. I would just like to highlight the information on page one hundred and three regarding the overspend projected at three point six three two million. And obviously, that will impact on our general fund balances, which is concerning, given that we were already to be facing in twenty twenty four, twenty five, around nineteen point five million pounds worth of cuts. Now, I do want to make clear here in my question, I'm not making a party political point here. I'm merely trying to get some information from the chief executive. But given that pretty serious situation in relation to savings required in twenty four, twenty five, following the First Minister's announcement on the nationwide council tax freeze, have officers as yet been given any assurance as to how this will be met in full? And in particular, how much we will actually receive? It's all very well talking about a council tax freeze, but what we do not want is that moved on to effectively being additional cuts in the new financial year. Our group is all in favour of keeping the council tax down. We've got consistency in that approach. We opted for the lowest council tax increase last budget. So I suppose what I'm asking is, can the chief executive confirm what correspondence, if any, has thus far been received from Scottish Government? And if the answer is nothing yet, I would hope the committee would agree that we can, as a collective, instruct the chief executive to write to the First Minister seeking that clarification. Thank you.
I'll come to the chief executive in just a moment, Fraser. And just to, I suppose, point to a couple of conversations that are taking place. There was an urgent COSLA meeting that did take place last week, COSLA leaders meeting, in which this item was discussed. So again, using the vehicle of COSLA as the mechanism for those broader conversations on what financial settlement looks like for a council tax freeze. And as you say, I think it's important to recognize that a council tax freeze is, again, something which most of our, if not all of our constituents will broadly welcome, given everything else is going up at this point in time. And of course, I, like everybody else, is looking for detail around what that means in terms of the financial settlement for the council to ensure that we can make the best decisions that we possibly can going forward into the budget. But I'll bring in the chief executive since that's where your question was directed. Greg?
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I can confirm that discussions are ongoing between all thirty two councils in COSLA with regards to modelling of what that funding would look like. Mr Emmett has been involved in those discussions. And I'm not aware as yet there has been any conclusions with regards to the meaning of fully funded. That's something that we'll continue to work with COSLA on based on our modelling for next year.
Okay, thanks for that. I would reiterate the point. I think it would be helpful for the city council to be writing to the First Minister seeking an assurance that we will find out as soon as possible what the extent of that funding is. It's all very well to talk about fully funded, but the devil is always in the detail. I've been, I've been round the houses with this over the years of things that are allegedly fully funded, which are far, far from that being the case. And the bottom line on this, you know, I think we all understand the concerns on COSLA's part about the verity health agreement, you know, the ink hadn't even been dry on the page and the manner in which this was announced. But I think the reassurance, I'm very keen that we get as soon as possible is the extent of that funding, so that we know that we are not exacerbating the level of savings that is required in twenty four, twenty five.
Thanks, Fraser. Like you, I expect that fully funded means fully funded, and that's what I'm working towards. Just to say, I think, again, if you'll indulge me for a moment, COSLA leaders will again meet this coming Friday. There will be further discussions and updates in that regard. So I think it would be helpful if you allow me to go into that meeting to have a further update and seek that clarity, since those conversations have been happening over the course of the last week. And then happy again to report back and provide information as and when we require it. And then we can discuss what actions take place thereafter. But I think given that there is a COSLA leaders this coming Friday, I think that's probably the best opportunity to have that discussion and report back to make sure that everything is as we expect and hope. And again, positive for constituents as well. I'll come to Kevin next. Kevin?
Okay, firstly, obviously, I thank Bailey McPherson for raising that particular issue, given that it is very pertinent to the council. And, you know, given that last year's increase the council and, you know, given that last year's increase went up by four point seven. And on the fourth of September, we obviously discussed the potential of a further accelerator model. And all the administration were in favour of that being a huge increase to people out there. I think it was prescribed as a progressive tax and something that they were very supportive of, or you were very supportive of. So pleased that you're now having a wee change of heart on that particular one. But I also felt that council tax probably needed to go up. So I'm hoping that the settlement that comes from government to cover that is very substantial. Now, the the question that I wanted to ask in relation to this paper is is in relation to Scottish government cuts that have affected directly Dundee. Because we've, over the last few years, cut the attainment challenge fund, I believe, by two point six million. And we've obviously, when that's happened, we've received from the administration an endless reassurance that measures were in place, procedures were embedded, and that that attainment challenge money wasn't really needed anymore to meet the needs of our children, our school and our schools. But yet, we're only two year in it. I suppose in the next month, we'll be seeing a report coming back to council with the next wave of Scottish government cuts to the attainment challenge fund, or probably another one point two million. And yet, we find ourselves as a council being overspent by three hundred thousand on attainment challenge. So can I ask officers if the three hundred thousand pound is built in as a cost pressure to next year's money? And taking into account for the nineteen point five that would potentially need to cut elsewhere? Or should we be writing to the Scottish government now, tell them to rethink again the attainment challenge fund? And deliver better for the kids in Dundee?
Thanks for the question, Kevin. A couple of things there to unpack and address, and then I'll bring officers in. So first of all, I think your initial comments on council tax completely misrepresented exactly what the administration group said. And as a matter of record and a recording, which was, we absolutely agree that there needs to be a complete overhaul of council tax. We are all in favour of seeing a comprehensive review of council tax to get a more fair and equal system in place. And that we've stood on manifesto commitments to do so. That was made abundantly clear by members of the administration. Secondly, it was also made abundantly clear during those deliberations that none of us wanted to see council tax go up. But given the consultation was on very specific proposals, and there was nothing else on the table at that point in time, we were very clear that what was required was a level-headed approach, which said that we recognise that there's huge challenges coming down the line. We want to protect services that our constituents rightly expect. And that at that point in time, looking at the questions within the consultation, that that was one mechanism of generating income to support the exact issues that have been talked about, which is the challenges we face going into next year's budget of nineteen point five million pounds. We also said that within that consultation response, that there needed to be a phased approach and potentially looking at revaluation as well. So please do not misrepresent exactly what was said during the course of that meeting, which was not that we were skipping down the street, endorsing a proposal, but certainly what was before us was the right approach, given the financial situation that we faced. And I'm glad to to hear that you endorse what was set out at the SNP Party Conference and a council tax freeze, which again is fully funded, is something that I'm sure we broadly recognise is important, given the cost of living crisis as well. The second point in terms of attainment, again, you seem to misrepresent the position, which was not, as you described, where we essentially said that everything was perfect and we didn't need the money. I failed to recognise any of that description, given I don't think I've ever uttered the words that we've got plenty cash in the in the bank and we've got enough to do everything that we need. What we've said consistently is that educational attainment is an absolute top priority for us. You know my position in terms of the COSLA conversation, being the only leader that did not support the recommendations going forward. You know the response from the committee previously when this issue has been discussed. You will no doubt know that the convenor has written to government previously and consistently to rehearse and to reiterate the position that we would like to see more money going to attainment in Dundee, and that we did not agree to the the change that took place, moving it from the minority of much-needed councils to every council in Scotland. So our position is very clear and consistent, and I don't appreciate it being misrepresented. And finally, it's also worth recognising, within our budget proposals previously, we included additional money to try and offset some of those reductions, because we know it's a top priority. So it's not merely about saying that we're doing everything and it's all perfect. It's recognising that the decision has been made despite our best efforts and despite our representations, and that we are trying to do the best, and council services and council employees are doing the best within the confines of the funding available. And I'll come to officers just to answer your specific question on the cost pressure element and future years. So if I can perhaps go to Robert in the first instance on the financial question, then I'll come to Audrey May. Thanks.
Thanks, convenor. So I think probably two points. Our assumption is that with the Ringfins funding will be contained in within the resources that are available, and certainly for next year, that's the planning assumption that we've made. And and I think perhaps just to answer an earlier point, officers are looking at means to manage expenditure, so it comes within budget for this year, and there'll be more detail available on that in the month coming forward. Mrs May, we wish to add to more detail in relation to the attainment challenge itself. Convenor?
Yeah, thank you. Audrey, can I bring you in if there's anything you'd like to add from an attainment point of view?
I don't I don't wish to add too much. Thank you, convenor. But yeah, the current projection does reflect that that there's been some pressures on this budget, and a lot of that is not all of it, but partially due to to salary increases, which we are managing through the next couple of months. So it's what we're looking at just now would indicate that we'll bring that budget back into into line, and we'll bring back updates to committee.
Thank you very much. Audrey? Yeah, I can see no other. Oh, sorry, Kevin's want to come back in.
I think I think you need to revisit some of your recordings, and that way you'll have a better understanding of what you've previously said. I'll leave it at that, convenor.
Thanks, Kevin. I don't think I need a reminder, but I appreciate the suggestion. Okay. With that, we will move on. Is this item agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
That takes us on to item six, Community Hubs Project, Kirkton. Can I ask you to note that the last sentence in paragraph four point sixteen should state October twenty twenty four rather than August? And this report is for approval?
Very much, Arlene. Obviously, this report has, in some senses, been a long time coming. There's been extensive work over the last few years to look at the model and the development of that within the Kirkton area. Again, I think we all recognise that whilst there'll be differences of opinion on the model itself, there has been a consistent, certainly, approach and endorsement from all the politicians around more effective use of our schools. And the three six five school programme was one that was unanimously endorsed over a considerable period of time. The practicalities of implementing that model is perhaps something that there might be some some difference of opinion on. And it's fair to say that, again, the Kirkton Community Centre has a place very dear in my own heart. I think I might have mentioned once or twice that I am from the Kirkton area and aware of that with a real sense of pride. And the Kirkton Community Centre, of course, has been a real fixture within the community for decades now. And it's been interesting just to see some of the photos of the community centre over the decades in recent press coverage and on social media as well. Again, thinking about recognition, I think it's also worth recognising the role of the community, particularly the current Kirkton Local Management Group, who have done extensive work in terms of development of programme, leveraging and support, and really playing an important role within that broader community. And I want to thank them also for their kind of pragmatic approach, not only to this issue, but issues generally within the community, and their proactive approach to engagement across the political spectrum, I think we'd all recognise that as well. It's worth recognising that whilst there are questions that they have asked, and again, being dealt with by officers, they have indicated certainly a supportive view of the model and what that means within the Kirkton community. And again, just to quote the letter that I received on the fourth of September, it says, we would firstly like to say that we are very supportive of the Community Hubs model that has been proposed, and in fact, believe it will benefit the community to able to be able to access these more modern facilities. And of course, there are a number of questions and asks from the community that I think is also really important to recognise. And that is why, even within the report, there is a recognition that there is an ambition there, a collective ambition, I think it's fair to say, to look at how the approach that they take can contribute and complement the work of the Community Hub model. And in recommendation two point five, recognising that there is a wish, particularly from that group, to look at what models can be developed in terms of potential for a new build, smaller development, which again complements the model, or to look at alternatives in terms of the arrangements for the building and the land. And again, all of this should absolutely be open for conversation in the sense of taking that pragmatic approach with the community group. And again, I think they've been incredibly supportive of making sure that whatever comes forward works for the broader community. I I think it's also important, from my perspective, to say a couple of things as well, in the sense that one of the things I've always been very clear on is the need to make sure that what we're doing is not only looking at how we best utilise the school buildings, which are superb, absolutely excellent. If you've been in them, you will absolutely know that that is the case. And again, I think it's recognising that there is supreme quality within those schools, which could be used by the community broadly. Some of it, of course, being used by the community, but not necessarily on a formal or regular basis. And the quality of those facilities means that we are providing a benefit, I think, to the community. Opening hours, in particular, being expanded is again another opportunity. So this is not merely about a cut and shut job, but this is about genuine enhancement in terms of the hours of operation, the quality of the services being offered, the range of the services being offered, and of course, utilising a hundred thousand pounds of support to support that work within the community, to make sure that we try and make sure that this model works for everyone and is the best it possibly can be. There are other models in terms of this type of approach being utilised, not just across Tayside, but across the whole of Scotland and indeed the UK. And of course, I'm sure Audrey, in response to some of the questions that will be asked, will be able to attest, since her previous role in Perth and Currick included work on within a community hub, I should say. So again, recognition that they do operate, they operate very well, and they are something of an asset within the communities in which they operate. I remember very finally, in twenty seventeen, I think it was, attending Forfar Academy at the behest of COSLA, where we had a meeting in the new Forfar Community Campus to march song and dance. And because what was being showcased within that particular establishment was exactly what we want to achieve. The operation of a building which is not just a school that operates nine to three, nine to four, but something which has a real benefit to the broader community. Now, I know there'll be some challenges, but again, I think the intention here is a good one. It's to enhance the availability of very good spaces within our schools for the broader community as well. So with that said, I will come to, I'll come to questions first, Daniel. I can see that you've got a motion to defer. So if you'll indulge the others at the moment, I'll go to questions and then we'll circle back. Kevin? Can I take your amendment in a moment as well? So I'll go back to Daniel for his amendment, and then I'll come to you. So if you can just ask your question at this point, please.
It might well be there'll be some level of agreement, because I would likely move the feral as well. The, and I think there's a lot of questions that are unanswered in relation to safety. I know that, you know, there is people that have been on, are on the board of Leisure and Culture Dundee, have talked to me about their concerns, saying that council, no matter what concerns they've raised, council have absolutely refused to engage or listen to them. And that's quite alarming when we look for volunteers to come along and take positions on boards. And, you know, the the they end up with that level of concern about the role that they take on on our behalf. And then there is obviously the community concern that, you know, the community group themselves have got concerns about if there was a food bank operating from there, then individuals would see mum or dad going out with bags of food while their children are at the school. Very much the sort of everything that within a school that we've tried to prevent happening to schoolchildren, who would be letting it happen to their parents as they're there. Obviously, there'll be a number of individuals within our community that might well be allowed into a library, that certainly wouldn't be allowed into a school. And and obviously, given the the level of security that went around the schools at the Dumblane time, this just seems to drive a coach and horses right through it. So I haven't got that level of reassurance from anyone that we've overcome any of these issues. So, you know, unless officers can give that afa afa clearly now, then I just don't see me being in a position to support this.
Thanks for the question, Kevin. I think it's really unhelpful to bring in to the mix something as traumatic as Dumblane. I genuinely think that's quite appalling to be bringing that in. I understand the question on security, and I respect the question on security. I'll bring officers in in a moment. Let's just circle back for a moment. And when we talk about this model, it's really, really important to emphasise the point that we are not doing something that is outlandish or that's off to one side that nobody has done before. This model is operating successfully, safely and securely across Tayside as we stand right now. There will be people in those school environments, in the community hub model, that are in Perth and Currick, that are in Angus, that are in Fife, that are successfully accessing those with all of those security issues addressed. So let's be clear, we would not be proposing anything that compromised the safety of our young people or our broader communities, because that's not something that anybody would sign up for. And I'm going to come to the chief executive in the first instance, because I think it's really important just to, again, get him to comment on the fact that this is something that has been in development for a period of time, working across the council, but also working with other organisations like Leisure and Culture, as you rightly say. And then, again, might wish to bring in other officers to comment.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Just to give you that assurance that this work has been done across the different services of the council, fully including Leisure and Culture Dundee. And my understanding, and I'm not privy to the feedback that you've had, is that Leisure and Culture Dundee board members were invited to attend St Paul's Academy to look at the facilities. And I have been involved in some discussions with the board, where I attended a recent meeting and also with the chair. And just to provide committee the assurance that where they have raised points of concerns, we have tried to address those, and where potentially we've not been able to, we have provided a reason for doing so. But just would like to give that assurance that across all council services and working with our partners, Leisure and Culture Dundee, we have tried to work on the best model to provide the best facilities to the community of Kirkton. And that's all, convenor, that I would like to add, but to pick up on the particular point regarding just the movement of the school convenor, you may want to bring in Mrs May, who's been involved with that along with other colleagues in the council, but I'll leave that for you to decide.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, Audrey, can I bring you in at this point, please?
Yes, thank you. And and I can also confirm that, you know, through the head teachers, that there have been discussions with all of these partners, including members of the board of Leisure and Culture Dundee, into the schools and having a walk around and so on to look at what might be possible and what we need to to look at to make it to make it work best. So I would want to, as as you did yourself, convenor, provide committee with assurances that we take safety and the security of our children, our young people and all our staff and all our visitors, who come to all our schools just now anyway, very, very seriously. And we look at it very, very carefully in terms of keeping everyone safe there and already. And and also, you know, some of the people that you might envisage that our children, young people, might meet in the community already live in their community, and they probably meet them before and after school and at different times. And so, as has already been said, just to re-emphasise that point, there are community campuses all over Scotland that operate in the way that we're planning for the Kirkton Hub. And and we will take the learning from those and ensure the safety of all, because that's what we need to do. And where necessary, we'll where necessary, we'll do what these other buildings have done. They've controlled entry, they've controlled the movement around the building by looking at key passes, fobs, et cetera, entry into the building, signing and support and supervision by staff. So this is working well in other parts of Scotland, as we said, and certainly across Tayside. And as has already been said, some of us have had personal experience of that. And I think, I have to say, it was nothing but a win-win for the community and for the school. So I think it's also worth noting, as it does allude to in the report, that actually, a lot of this work is already going on. This is not starting from a blank sheet. There are many community groups and there are many partners already working in and out of this community. So it's also worth maybe looking at, you know, there was a comment about food banks. Can I say nearly every school in Dundee operates its own food bank and its own clothing bank and swap shops around school? And these are done very sensitively every day. And parents and carers and families are allowed to come in and bring something and help themselves and swap something. And that's a feature in our schools now. However, we have also looked at the Cirkton Hub as a wider model. It's not just about St Paul's and Baldragan Academy. It's also about the churches, the church halls and other, other facilities in the community. And so Marie would be able to provide more detail if it's requested about what we plan to do around the food hubs. But I would say, and the food banks, but I would say that's, that's not something that's alien to our schools just now. And it, and it works very well. And parents and carers and families feel very supported by the fact that our schools do that. And it's again, it's not just food, it's clothing as well. And especially as we come into the winter, we'll see that activity increase. So that, that would be my assurance to committee just now. I hope I've answered most of your questions there. In terms of feedback around Leisure and Culture Dundee, I don't think that would be appropriate for me to answer, but I can confirm that colleagues there have been engaged. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Audrey. Charlie, I think we've had the hokey-cokey. So do you want to come in?
Yeah, well, Stuart was before me.
Well, yeah, he wasn't, then he wasn't. So, I mean, I'll come to you and then I'll come to Stuart.
I'm quite happy and quite happy to do the hokey-cokey with you, Chair. Obviously, this is a difficult issue that we have to grapple with. We have to accept the need for extra provisions within our community and extra facilities within our communities. But what we can't lose sight of is the philosophical role of a community centre and about how community centres are established to bring communities together, not separate them. And I think that the model that's been presented has the potential to do just that. So people could sign up for their clubs and they could come along to their clubs. But that integration within your community seems to me to be lost. And Audrey, you talked about the safety aspects of this. And later on, you said that Leisure and Culture Dundee have engaged with this. Yes, we have. And I have never had a satisfactory answer about how that will be managed. It's all about, this is what we can do. But I've never had a satisfactory answer about how we can manage this. And I also want to come and look at the library facilities, because I think that's, I think, reading the report, I don't want to be negative about the report, but reading the report, I think there's something fundamentally missing when it comes to libraries. Now, I did a bit of research in Lochie Library, because I had to, I decided to do my marketing in Lochie Library, which meant I was there for a few days from nine o'clock in the morning to five o'clock at night. And what I observed was a pattern of attendance. And that pattern of attendance was, in the early hours, you tended to have pensioners, oh, sorry, older people, Dorothy Hill got on to me, older people who were, who were coming about getting their books, getting the exchanges as well, speaking to staff, having a cup of coffee. And then you would get the people who were coming in to use the facilities to apply for benefits, because they had no facilities at home. And by the time we get to the evenings, you tended to find that's when kind of the school kids would come in with their parents to get, to get books and other educational materials. I do support Audrey when she talks about the, the warm clothes and stuff like that and about the food. But again, we have to recognise that community centres were part of our response to this cost of living crisis. Where do people go to keep warm? If we're saying that the availability is going to be out with the norm, where do people go to keep warm? How do we deal with the outcomes, the devastating outcomes of communities? I don't doubt there's a single councillor in this, on this call, who doesn't want to see what's best for the communities. But I worry. And I've raised my concerns with Leisure and Culture Dundee. I didn't go on the visit, and that was on purpose, because it wasn't what I needed to understand. I needed to understand about the safety, the security of the premises, about the usability in relation to the demographics that use it. There's no point in saying to me, the library will be open from five to nine in the evenings. No point telling me that. Because what I saw was a demographic that didn't use those times and wouldn't use those times because they're not going to come out at night. So I want to be supportive of this, but I want us to recognise there are real issues and tensions that come from what we are doing. And it may be, and I know it's been successful elsewhere, Audrey, because I've looked at the other projects, but it may be that what we are doing is providing something that's a benefit to a certain portion of the population, but it disenfranchises other element, other aspects and parts of the population. I just, I've got real concerns, particularly around library provision and the safety provision, which were never addressed to me satisfactorily at Leisure and Culture Dundee.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Couple of points perhaps to pick up on. So first of all, it's really important to emphasise what I said in my introductory remarks, that essentially, for me, this was not just simply about addressing the issue of the finite time that we've got with the Cirkton Community Centre, because I think we'd all acknowledge that the building is not necessarily fit for purpose in a modern environment. It was about enhancement. And as is detailed within the report, we're looking at enhanced hours of operation, not reduced hours of operation. So if I take the library as the example, nine till seven PM, which is an enhancement on the current level of usage or operation. Same with the sports and leisure facilities, same with the swimming pool facilities. So what we're doing in utilising better equipped spaces, higher quality spaces, and I don't think anybody could disagree with that, is also increasing the opportunities for access. Now, coupled with that, as is referenced within the report, is we have to acknowledge, as we've talked about earlier tonight, that there is significant issues of poverty and deprivation in that community and the broader community. And I know it very well. And my mum and dad literally live round the corner from where this is being proposed. And that's exactly why we've also utilised and identified £100,000 to look at ways in which we can reduce those barriers to access, be they financial or be they pragmatic, in the sense that, for example, we've talked about swimming access. Why do more people not use the swimming pools, the two swimming pools that will be made available within the Cirkton Community? Some of that might well be down to the fact that they do not have the equipment, they do not have swimming gear. So can we use those funding mechanisms to ensure that we are removing barriers? So this is, in many senses, a test of change that will allow us to try and reduce those barriers and ensure that there's as best access as is possible under the new model. And there are, as others have said, you know, a vast array of these types of models in operation successfully, delivering positive results in those communities and research reports that show the positive impact that they have had. I think it's also worth pointing out, there was reference before to food banks. It's not a food bank, it's a food larder, it's a community food larder, it's a different thing. And we need to recognise that actually that group, that food larder has done incredible work in terms of de-stigmatising and allowing access to those that need it within the Cirkton community. And of course, have expanded their operations as well within the Stratford-upon-Word, which I think is a testament to their hard work and determination as well. I'll come to Stuart next.
Convener, my comment was going to be in relation to the motions to defer. So I'm happy to come back after other people come in and the two councils who wish to move the feral.
Thanks very much, Stuart. Right, I'll try and make sure I get everybody in the right order in that sense. So I'll come to Lynne and then Jaxx, and then we'll circle back to the motions and amendments. So Lynne.
Good evening, convener. I did go to the, the little day trip, I love a day trip, got a different bus up there. And can I just say, we were at a crossover, so we had the two head teachers, and they were both incredibly responsive to the idea, to the point that they were really quite excited. Lots of the learning that we do nowadays is not like we did in the olden days in front of, sorry, John, not everybody did in the olden days, but in front of a blackboard. And, and so it's very different. So we're talking about the fact that they can do things like serve the customers, the barista training that they do. And they're also looking at things like perhaps childcare and things. And so it was really incredibly positive what was coming from the the head teachers at the school. And I think Judy is on the call, she was with me that day as well. And those of us who were there from Leisure and Culture, we came away really quite excited about how this could be an amazing opportunity. And Mrs May, you've talked about your previous experience. And everyone on this call will know, if you've heard me before, I was brought up by a community centre. It was myself, a community centre, but I now represent a ward that doesn't have a community centre. So I have this massive chip on my shoulder. But what we do now is, we have this school, that is effectively a three, six, five school, which is, it's grown from grass roots. So this school now has someone inside who is working with the community on benefit delivery. And they've raised thousands across my community in benefit delivery because they're in the school. And I, I give blood, sweat and tears for my community. And actually, last month, I gave blood in the school, along with the school teachers, because the blood bank, and it was myself and also the local vicar who went along just to see how it would operate with members of the public in there, so that next time they come round, they can do it and open up to the wider community. So I think sometimes we can, we have to look at the positives. I had concerns. My dad went to an RC school back in the day, and I had concerns, but I raised them directly with the head teachers. And those concerns were 100% covered during that conversation. So I think it's really important to have those conversations with the partners, especially if you're one of those partners. So I, for one, think that what we've done is, we've had lots of conversations. Three, six, five schools became on the agenda when I first got elected in 2016. So it's nothing new. You know, we're here now, and it's great to see that we're actually moving on. And yeah, I'm awful.
You put yourself on mute there, Lynne, I think. Just put yourself off at the end. But okay, we've got the gist. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to Jaxx next.
Hiya. There was just, I don't, I'm not sure if it's a comment or a question. And it's not just pertaining to Cirkton. I've spoken to a lot of young people over the last wee while, some people from Doug, that use Douglas Community Centre and some that use Vintrey Community Centre. And their concerns are that if, what happens to them if they don't have a good relationship with school? You know, where, where can they go if they see their community centre as their place, they're an outlet for them that's not related to anything school at all. And given what Lynne's just said, it's three, six, five schools, you know, it's always, it's a school building. Now, I would love to see nursery children, schoolchildren, everybody access the same. I really believe there's a lot to be gained from multi-generational mixing and everybody using the same places and meeting up. And we could all learn for like a wee village with the home for the elderly and everything with schoolchildren. That's all great. But my concern is, where do these people go if they don't want to be going to school? We're trying hard to, to keep them in schools. We need, we still need these venues and these locations in the community that are not related to education, you know. And I know that comes with the financial cost of having these buildings open. But I, what is the, you say it's a test of change. So what is the alternative for these young people that don't have this good relationship with school? So we're not going to get them in the building? Hope that makes sense.
Oh, you know, it absolutely makes perfect sense. I'll bring in Audrey in just a moment. I think it's, it's fair to say, you know, it will be a change because people are used to what they currently have. And of course, with any change, there will be some challenges and opportunities and we'll manoeuvre our way through that. I think it's important to recognise as well that if we agree this report tonight, they're no longer schools, they are community hubs. And when we think of, again, the operation, and that might sound like a flippant comment, but you know, I would, I would actually really encourage all members of the committee to go and look at some of the models that are currently in operation. And I'm sure through officers, we could potentially facilitate a visit to the likes of Forfar Community Campus to see how it operates. Because for me in 2017, that was a real eye opener in how you can do things differently, but do things incredibly well, which actually deliver tangible benefits. So again, it's thinking about these as community centres, essentially. They are community hubs, they're not just merely schools, they provide a wider suite of opportunities. And of course, as officers have said as well, there are other assets within that community that we'll use. And it's not just to say that we're looking at this in isolation. So there's been investment within the Cirkton area. If we look at the development of 4G pitches, for example, at the back of As the Cirkton, and a whole host of other interventions through our youth work teams, which are connecting with young people that often disconnect. I think it's fair to say that whilst there are a great many young people that do connect and use the resources available through our community centre, even Cirkton Community Centre as it stands at the moment, there's also a hell of a lot that don't. And those young people that don't currently connect, whether it be in school, also don't necessarily connect through our community centre. So we need to look at different models of engagement. I'm really keen on the back of this, and there's been some very positive conversations, which I can't go into any great detail, because I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. But exploring other avenues for leveraging in resources which support that type of activity to look at how this model of intervention actually generates real long lasting benefits in terms of antisocial behaviour, educational attainment, youth work engagement. There's a whole series of other pieces of work that will come alongside this. And we shouldn't just see this mainly in isolation. But I'm now wittering on and I'm going to bring in Audrey to be much more comprehensive and to the point than I was. So Audrey.
Well, no pressure not to witter then. Thank you, convener. Yeah, I mean, don't want to add too much to what you've said, because you've really covered the main points. But I suppose it saddens me a wee bit, councillor, again, just to hear you saying, you know, it's schools, children, young people that don't have good relationships with schools. But that is the reality for some of their experiences because of everything else that's going on in their lives. But I suppose our convener has very clearly made the point that needs to be made here. We're now talking about a hub, not a school anymore. Yeah, there's still a school within these hubs. It's the same plan for the East End Community Campus, which I know some of these conversations have probably come from around the east end of the city, where we've been engaging with lots of young people and lots of groups around what they might use the campus for. So I suppose the main thing is that our own mindset and our understanding changes that this is about, this is about a hub model. And so if young people are coming in for different activities at different times of the day and night, weekend, it won't be to meet their teachers. So that's probably one of the, the reliefs that we can, we can share, that they will be there to meet other people like youth workers, like Sports Scotland and tutors and, and coaches and all the things that are already going on just now, in terms of the school of sport in Baldragan, the swimming pool in St Paul's and so on. So there's, there's lots of different people who will be offering services for them, not just teachers and school. But I would also want to say, there's, there's also a clue in the work that our youth workers and our communities workers do. It's called CLD, it's about learning in every context for our young people. It's not education and it's equal to schools. Learning happens everywhere and all the time for our young people. And so much of the work that Marie's teams will do in the communities with these young people is about engaging them in learning in different contexts and in different groupings and giving them opportunities to achieve in different ways. That's all about their education. So we're trying not to separate this out, but we are trying to build a hub where young people could come and be engaged with different people who could support them and just developing and increasing their opportunity for better outcomes. That, that's really the bottom line for us. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Audrey. I'll come back to the suggestion of amendments. But first of But first of all, just again, so I'm clear in terms of processing and getting this in the right order from my perspective. And so I have an amendment to the report which I'm going to move first. And so as I've said, there was a couple of asks that came from the Kirkton Local Management Group. And again, I can't praise them enough for their engagement, their constructive challenge and also the suggestions that they've put forward. Two point five specifically references the, the need for ongoing engagement to realise the ambitions of the, the community itself. And also to explore the options of how they realise those ambitions, whether that be through looking at the building, the land, looking at different models through lease, through a community asset transfer and exploring those options. And again, we send a very clear signal that we expect officers to engage with the group to explore all of those options. And my amendment, if committee services could please display that and circulate it, is fairly simple. And there was an ask, and I think this will perhaps be something that councillor Coleman, Daniel speaks to in terms of looking at the potential for a deferral of the report. I actually think that's probably not necessarily entirely useful for the community because without a decision, what are we engaging with? So my suggested amendment is to realise, I suppose, the suggestion of a deferral of a month or two by actually elongating the time period for which the building will operate. And so quite simply, looking to extend that closure date to the end of 2024 to give the same effect of a deferral by adding a couple of months for further exploration and to explore those potential avenues for what the, the, the community group itself wants to achieve. And for us to lean in and support them and see how we might well do that, including as the report says, looking at access to external funding as well. So fairly simple amendment and that's what I'll move. So first of all, can I have a second and then we'll go to Daniel.
I'll formally second, convener.
Thank you very much, Willie. Okay, Daniel, I'll come to you first and then we might want to circulate yourself at your own, sorry, amendment and Kevin's as per his suggestion, but I'll come to you first.
Okay, thank you, Mr Convener. I have to say, for me, I'm disappointed by this report. The intention to close and eventually demolish the creative centre is my view a disaster. Although it may need some improvements, for me, it is working very well. But and I, perhaps we should be looking at making it better instead of getting rid of it, but that's clearly not going to happen. Since we are quoting the letter that was sent to our councillors, let's not cherry pick and make it sound better for the side we want. It also says, however, we do not agree with the closure of the community centre at this time, as there are many projects that cannot fit into the hub model. And for me, crucially, I feel there should not, there should be an elective members briefing with officers to go through the significant number of issues arising out of this report before it goes to a formal position at committee. Issues that in my mind have not been fully answered include public access of non P V G people in school settings during school day. Just because it hasn't, there's not been any issues before does not mean that will not happen. Something has not happened until it has done for the first time. So I am extremely concerned and not satisfied with the responses given so far. Ability to accommodate all daytime community activities, particularly for older people when the community centre, when the community centre is removed. Parking issues for the community trying to access activities during school day. Having attended St Paul's, I could tell you it's a very good used car park for the day, so I don't know where anybody will park. And the array, the array of issues raised by the Kirkton Community Centre Local Management Group, who know these issues better than any officer or elective member on this call today. They speak with the users of these facilities all the time and have a good feel for how people feel on them. And as opposed to, on my view, our unrepresentative consultation results. They know the school be unsuitable as an unsuitable location for the community ladder, drug and alcohol recovery projects that happen at the centre as well as literacy groups. Users of these, users of these magnificent services would not be comfortable to attend the sessions in school facilities. And indeed, in some cases, would not be able to attend at all. Councillor Malone did mention the library and I'm quite annoyed at this one. In respect to the library, I was advised on the 22nd of September 2023, so only last month, that no consultation had been undertaken with library users despite assurances to me in September last year that one would be carried out. So why has that not happened? And why was I assured one would be if it wasn't going to? Now fundamentally, I agree with the position. There's nothing wrong with the hub model as such. And I don't want it to be misrepresented to say I'm against all the benefits that will come from that whole model. Because frankly, I think as was going on, this is not a one or other situation like some are trying to portray. There is a better solution of having the hub and retaining the community centre as well. So I would therefore ask for the feral at this time, so we can have a full elective members briefing, so we can fully discuss these issues that to my mind have not yet been answered and ideally call for a public meeting at the community centre as well. So many more voices can be heard.
Okay, thanks for moving your amendment. Daniel, I'll go and ask for your second. I think Fraser, you're second then.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I'll be pretty brief because I think Daniel's pretty much covered it. But we are quite disappointed that we've reached the formal position without having the opportunity to go through in a degree of detail, which you never quite achieve in the formal position with regard to some of the outlying, outstanding issues. I think there's been quite a lot in this, both from officers and from yourself, convener, in this about selling the hub concept. That's not the issue. Daniel has touched on it. I don't think there's anyone on the call, I'll stand to be correct. I don't think there's anybody on the meeting tonight that's against the concept of the hub as such. The issue is whether the hub model includes the retention of a community facility that is run and managed by the local management group. And as things currently stand, and I have to say, what's in two point five doesn't cut it for me at all. About because it's so nebulous about exploring options, blah, blah, blah. So the community centre gets flattened and the thing run by the local management group has gone. And not entirely, I've been in Kirkton Community Centre. I have to say, there's a great deal of sadness in the community. My, my wife and family were born, brought up and raised in Kirkton. One of my sisters-in-law was instrumental, as a very young woman, I might add, in campaigning for the community centre to be built in the first place. It was a load of teenagers who ran the campaign to get a Kirkton Community Centre back in the day. And we feel pretty strongly that there was a need to, two things really. Not to spend the night trying to sell the hub concept, which I don't think any of us have any problem with. But to go through all these issues about the sort of things that Daniel's alluded to in relation to what the local management group's done in relation to what might not be able to run during the school day. And also the issues around P V G, the issues around ensuring that absolutely everything that currently is provided can continue to be provided and at the time the community wish. And that's a crucial thing. But also I think to, in order to reach an agreement as to a way forward with the local management group. I'm very disappointed we've got to the position tonight that this is going forward with the local management group not being in full agreement. They agree with me and with you, convener, about the principle of the hub. That ain't, that ain't the issue. The issue is whether it goes forward with the retention of the community centre or whether it does not. And that's why we feel it would be better to defer tonight. Hopefully reach some positive way forward with the Kirkton Community Centre Local Management Group and have a full briefing with elected members to go through all the issues that have been raised tonight. Whether that's parking, whether that's P V G, whether that's daytime activities, whatever, in order that we can actually deal with this and go forward on this in a united way rather than dividing tonight, convener. Thank you.
Thanks, Fraser. I'll come to Kevin next. Kevin, you indicated you've got an amendment. And again, if you're happy to have that circulated, it might be that there's some degree of commonality.
And I did, well, I'm happy to accept, without it being circulated, that I'm happy to accept the Lib Dem's amendment. And, and hope that there is a consensus reached on that for, within the chambers. I think it's a sensible way forward. It's certainly taken a great deal, there's put a lot more thought into it than I did myself. So I would have to acknowledge that and, and believe that that would be the one to support at the meantime. And hope that you would as well, convener, given that you represent the area.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, well, I think that's everything. So I think we're at the formal position. I think I've outlined my position fairly clearly. We've obviously been having these discussions for, for literally years now in terms of developing this model to a point where we've got this report before us. And of course, it's really important to recognise that, as I did say, throughout the course of what I've said tonight, there are questions and considerations that the community want us to look at going forward. Certainly over the next 14 months to ensure that all of that is reflected as we move forward. But there is, of course, part of this, which is as we move those services across, we will identify different ways of operating. We will identify new programmes and projects and initiatives as part of this process as well. And that's why I was certainly quite excited for the prospect of having some resource to be able to support and facilitate that. And I know, of course, as I've alluded to, there are other conversations that I think will be of material benefit to the broader community. But we've also not necessarily recognised, and I know Daniel had referenced that, you know, he thinks the building's okay. And in many respects, it works for some aspects, but the building is not fit for purpose. And as the report recognises, it has a finite life. And as we all know from the reports that we've also considered tonight, we also don't have any capital resource to look at a rebuild programme right now as things stand. So we need to be realistic about what we're trying to achieve, which is the best possible results for the community with the best possible standards of accommodation, which are the new build schools or relatively new build schools that we have in that area as well. And whilst, again, I think we might disagree tonight, I think there is broad consensus, as Fraser says, in terms of the model being something that is a good thing for the community. And I hope, again, that they see the positive results of what's being proposed tonight. And again, recognising all of the challenges that we've said, but also that additional time to explore those options. So with all that said and all the contributions, thank you very much all for your questions and contributions. We'll move, oh, sorry, Stuart, you're right, I missed you. I'll come to you and then we'll go to the vote.
That's okay, convener, I'll get my own back later on. I think parts of the next debate have been a bit disappointing. I think some of the comments, I think on reflection, I think hope some people will reflect on it and reflect that perhaps some of the comments they've made tonight were not appropriate. And I, I'm really disappointed that what should be a, a positive discussion about making sure we bring additionality to facilities in the areas that we represent. Some of the comments tonight, I don't think have been helpful at all. And as I said, I think some elected members should really reflect on what they've said tonight and think seriously about it. I think, convener, I think you're absolutely right. I think what your amendment does is give us a lot, extra opportunity to, to engage with the community. And I welcome the comments that you, you outlined from the local management group. Obviously, all four elected members of Strathmerton have seen that letter and are very much aware of, of what they are saying. They're broadly supportive of the proposal and what they want is a bit more time to work on what happens with the community facility. The, the, the building and the land as it stands. And I think what your amendment does is allows us to still have those conversations and officers will continue to engage with the local management group and the community to see what happens with that facility and what opportunities we can deliver there. But it doesn't stop what we actually want to happen, which is the additional opportunities for the people of Kirkton. And I think what a deferral does is destroys the opportunity to us to put that into, in now and start helping the community which needs those extra facilities right now. So that's why I'm supportive of your amendment. It's why I don't support a deferral. I think you can do two things at the same time. I know some people think councils can't do that, but we can. We can actually work with the local community on the facility. But at the same time, bring in the hub, bring in the extra facilities, the additionality that we've all talked about that we want to see. See the hub develop in the way that we want to do. And, you know, we were talking earlier on about, you know, young people maybe not engaging. This is an opportunity to maybe break those barriers by doing it now and allowing the facility, the facilities in the, these two schools to be used for the community right now. So I'm totally supportive of your amendment. I think it's the most sensible way forward. We can start delivering for the, the people of Kirkton with extra facilities. But also engage with the community at the same time about what happens next for the facility. And so I'll be supporting your amendment tonight, convener.
Thank you very much for your words. And as I said, we'll move to the vote, Arlene.
Convener, sorry, I just need to check. I think we're voting against deferral or non-deferral of the report in the first instance. Now, I think Roger's not actually in the meeting now, but although he's, I think he's on the phone. And but I think what we need to do here is do, your motion would be non-deferral against the, the deferral would be the vote. Yep. Do you agree with that? Yeah.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. And then we'll consider my amendment thereafter, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for that.
That's my big one, Roger.
So the motion by the convener, sorry, you need to have a second, I'm sorry.
I'll have a second.
Apologies. So the motion by the convener, seconded by councillor Hunter, is not to defer consideration of the report. The amendment by councillor Coleman, seconded by Bailey McPherson, is deferral of consideration of the report. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Anderson.
Also motion.
Oh, sorry, councillor Anderson.
Do I get two votes?
Councillor Anderson is motion.
Apologies, thank you. Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor El Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts. Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sowers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Defer.
So that's amendment.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you. Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McElvan.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
The amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Brighton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So that gives 14 for the motion, 14 for the amendment. Convener, you have the casting vote.
I'll vote for the motion.
The motion is carried. Thank you.
Okay, Arlene, we need to vote on the proposed amendment that I moved.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what the amendment would be.
So we voted on the deferral motion and obviously we've voted not to defer. Do we now need to move to the vote on the substance? So I've moved the recommendation of the report plus the amendment that was circulated around elected members, or am I getting myself muddled?
Happy to accept that, convener.
Sorry, I'm not sure. I think we need advice from Roger. Sorry.
It's all right. Is Roger on the call at the moment?
Could I just perhaps say, convener, at this point, I think what really should have happened there was, is there was no, nobody actually proposing the report unamended. Because the people in favour of the report as it stood also wanted the amendment. I think it goes without saying that you've, you've, you've already essentially already won the vote, if you follow my drift. I don't think anybody, I think Kevin's already indicated that position and I think I'm doing the same. So I, I, I just don't see the point. I think, I, I, I think it might have been more helpful if it had been the report as amended versus the feral, if you follow my drift. But I don't, I don't think there's a need for a, a, another division, to be honest.
If everybody agrees to that, then we'll move forward on that basis.
Can, can, can we not, I mean, I agree to that, but have a further amendment to the report.
Convener. Just to complicate matters. Right, okay, Kevin, what, what are you suggesting?
So someone else is trying to come in as well.
Oh, apologies, who was that?
Convenor, Roger, can you hear me?
Oh, Roger.
Yes.
Apologies, I've been having connectivity issues myself convenor. Can I suggest that in the circumstances, the appropriate next step, given that Bailey Keenan has a further amendment, is to move your motion as previously circulated. That's for the deferral for a period of two months to enable community consultation to take place against Bailey Keenan's amendment.
Convenor, I'm, I'm happy to accept that you're two month. My further amendment is in relation to someone else that shouldn't be mated against that.
Kevin, do you want to explain what your amendment is?
Well, the amendment is to look for the, the eighty six thousand pound that will be available through the sort of closure of the centre that you're just sort of moved and have it spent in Kirkton year on year, giving it an increase, an inflationary increase. It's, you know, given that we had riots in Kirkton less than a year ago, I'm looking to secure the funds in Kirkton to make a real difference for the community. Happy for the motion to be circulated. I think we've accepted that your deferral, your four month is, is in place.
Roger, can I bring you in at this point, please, just to clarify?
As I understand that Bailey Keenan's indicating that he accepts that the, the motion that you proposed would be carried. I think what he has is a further proposal for the approval or disapproval of the committee. So I would suggest again that your motion in its unamended form be voted against Bailey Keenan's amendment, which would be acceptance of the deferral, which has previously been discussed, but including the further recommendation that Bailey Keenan had mentioned.
Okay, thanks very much. I'm going to stick to my motion, a couple of reasons for that. I've explained previously that there's both this additional resource, but the potential for other additional resources. I also think taking decisions out with the broader context when we know what we're going into in terms of the next round of consultation around the budget is extremely challenging. And I think we need to have a broader analysis. So at the appropriate time, perhaps to, to consider that specific detail, I think would be part of the budget. And we're just going to stick to the motion as it stands and we'll go to the vote on the basis of your amendment. But I'll ask if you've got a second there first Kevin?
Could, could, I'd rather I said a bit more about it and, and obviously we'll look for the second. Okay.
Go for it Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you've spelt out there is that the whole of this exercise is around budget cuts. And it's no, we're delivering the best for the people of Kirkton. And this, this motion attempts to do that and has that level of finance coming in year on year to make a difference. Decisions made by local people about what's required. Given with riots in the streets there a matter of a year ago, and what have we done? A bit of extra youth work, work with a few younger children, trying to make a difference. It's frankly not enough. You know, we need to leave her in a bit more into Kirkton. But, you know, it certainly spells out that, that what we've just voted on there was just about the administration pushing through next year's cuts, which is really disappointing. Perhaps councillor Hunter can reflect on that as he's telling people to reflect on what they've been saying.
Yeah Kevin, I think Dorothy's seconding you. Dorothy, is that formal second or do you want to speak?
Briefly, if I may, if I may.
Of course.
I'm pleased to support Bailey Keenan's motion to retain the eighty six thousand of annual savings. We all remember, as Kevin's already mentioned, the riots that took place in Kirkton at around this time last year. And considering that we're now proposing to close the community centre that sits at the heart of Kirkton. And there's a level of uncertainty around the continuation of some vital services for some of the area's most vulnerable groups. It would seem fair, wouldn't it, to make this investment to show a level of commitment to local people. The money could be used to support much needed youth diversionary activities and other local projects as we move towards this period of change for the people in Kirkton. So let's do that. Let's reassure the people of Kirkton that the council remains committed to supporting the young people of Kirkton and the most vulnerable groups in their community. I second the motion.
Thanks Dorothy, that's appreciated. I just, again, reiterate the point I made previously, which is this model provides enhanced hours of operation, better facilities, a, a funding pot that will allow for the approach that I've described in terms of removing barriers in access with that additional hundred thousand pounds. I think the, the motion also, in terms of looking at the model of delivering that eighty six thousand pounds, I'm not sure it would necessarily be the one that the community would choose either. And I think there has to be a conversation with them in terms of looking at PBs. Is that the right approach or should it be targeted in terms of looking at youth work? Or should it be targeted in terms of existing, you know, projects, et cetera? So I think on that basis, let's go to the vote. Arlene, over to you.
Thank you. The motion by the convenor, seconded by Bailey Sours, is circulated. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor McHugh, is also circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor El Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts. Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sours.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Creepshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McElvan.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
The amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
No vote.
So that's 14 for the motion and 13 for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on with the agenda, Arlene.
Item seven, update on Ukrainian displaced persons programme, this is for noting.
Again, everyone will know that there's been a comprehensive piece of work undertaken by partners across the city in terms of supporting the Ukrainian displaced persons programme. And Dundee has played a significant role in terms of that national approach. And of course, our services have really leaned in across health and social care, housing, education and others. It's been a really incredible amount of work that's gone into that programme. So this report sets out some of that context around the range of services and how that's been supported. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments on that report. So Michael.
Thank you Camer. Can I first of all thank all those who have worked to support the Ukrainian displaced people who have come to our city? I remember I brought this up when I gatecrashed the group leaders, which was a good experience. But no, it was, we've been chatting about this obviously since it happened. And the report indicates that there's still eighty four guests within our hotel accommodation. And can I ask how long on average they've been in hotel accommodation? And are officers confident that housing will be found for them in the short term?
Thanks very much for the question, Michael. I'm kind of, I'm looking across officers to see who might be best placed. So if I can go to Diane in the first instance, and then if it's appropriate, we can bring in others. Diane.
Thank you. The length of time that people have stayed in hotels varies. We have a number of people who are, were among our very first people to arrive in the city. So effectively stayed in the hotel since its, its conception. Other people are people who continue to arrive in the city as part of either the initial resettlement programme in terms of people coming in. But equally, we're starting to see an increase in people who previously were in Scotland, went back to Ukraine and have returned. Some of those people may have originally been in Dundee, some might not have. But obviously placements are made where there are available hotels. So quite a mix, but we do still have people who arrived originally.
Thank you. Yeah, no, just to finally convenor, just to say that, yeah, my group totally, thank you very much Diane for the answer. And we understand that other news items are taken and rightly so president, but we need to keep an eye on this one because obviously we don't want, we welcome them to our city and we don't want to kind of loosen our razor sharp focus on them.
Thanks very much, Michael. And again, just to, I think collectively put our thanks on record to all the staff who have not only spent professional time, but very much also volunteered additional time to support this programme as well. So thank you to everybody involved. I see no other questions or comments, so can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much, Arlene.
Item eight, procurement of omni-channel digital services, this is for approval.
The report seeks approval for the commence of a compliant procurement process for modern communication services. It's incredibly exciting as the name suggests. So is there any particular questions on the substance of the report? Fraser.
Thanks for that. I, I waded through what omni-channel digital services actually even meant. But the report does explain, to be fair. I'll, I'll not reiterate my concern about the way we, we deal with these procurements through hubs. You've heard me bore everybody about this already. But my, my questions really are on the recommendations. And although the financial implications indicate it will be in the, in the, an estimate of around forty seven thousand, I would have thought that delegation up to a certain amount might have been the, the, the way to do this, rather than just an overall delegation for this to be dealt with by officers. Can I have an assurance that in the event that, that we had an award coming in a significantly greater amount, we would be advised of this and the reasons for it? I just want the reassurance that we are going to actually get procurement in the ballpark of somewhere in the order of around fifty thousand pounds.
Thanks Fraser, I'll go to Robert.
Thank, thank you convenor. I'm happy to take that on board and to circulate information when the tender is awarded if members are interested. Happy to do that.
That's greatly appreciated, Robert, thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions on this, so can this item be agreed? Thank you very much, Arlene.
Item nine, budget investment proposal events, this was previously agreed and is for noting.
Oh, sorry Fraser, come to you.
I'm going to be extremely brief here convenor, because as, as, as was technically indicated there, this is for noting. But I do want to make clear that, and our group wishes to make clear that we did agree to sign this off and view the timescales and that was the only reasonable thing to do. We did in our response say, first of all, that in relation to the free activities in the city centre, we reiterate our longstanding position that we would have liked to see a return of the Christmas tree and lights switch on in the city square, which I know is not agreed by everybody. However, substantially, we also said, and I'm sure everyone will agree with this, but I just want to make the point. We did say with regard to the new event on food and sustainability, that we feel strongly the final recommendations on content, location, et cetera, must come back to committee for approval. I hope that doesn't cause anybody any difficulty, I'm sure we can all agree to that. Thank you convenor.
Don't think it does, certainly want to see detail of those proposals myself, so thank you for that. If there's nothing else, we'll take that as agreed in terms of noting. Thank you very much. Arlene.
Convenor, that takes us on to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
It appears we do not. So I think it's appropriate at this stage to ask the press and public to leave the meeting so we can consider the item.